Yep, ready.
Glad to say. Good evening to everyone. Welcome to the board meeting here at Dejounte Middle School. October the nineteenth. And. And we about to go in the closed session. Uh, government code five, four, nine, five, seven, dash, seven. Uh, tonight, the board. Will consider. These areas conference with labor negotiation. Student Discipline Education Code Section three, five, one, four, six. Uh, conference with legal counsel regarding pending subdivision government code section. Paragraph one of five, four, nine, five, six, dash, nine. And then public employee discipline dismissal, release and complaint. And then after that, we will adjourn closed session at six thirty. Uh, PM to recommit in the main auditorium of the school at six thirty. So, um, are there any? Um, public comments pertaining to the various items that were just mentioned?
There's no public comment.
Okay. There's no public comment. So now. We prepare for closed session. And we will be back at six thirty PM to open up with the regular board meeting for this evening. See you shortly. Like to say good evening to everyone. And welcome to the board meeting here at Dejounte. This October the nineteenth, regular board meeting. At the West Country Constitution Park School District to access translation of the agenda. Click on the top of the webpage. Uh, using the word English for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available in the Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. Due to the ongoing COVID nineteen crisis. Uh, the manner in which the Board of Education. Education meetings are conducted has changed. Thank you. For, thank you in advance. For your understanding and cooperation as we experiment with new ways. To conduct the people business while allowing the maximum participation and hearing. To our values of all respect and safety for the community. We have changed pub- public comment. Format, which now occurred at the beginning of the meeting. And public comment will last for no more. Then one hour and in, includes any agendized and non-agendized item. The time allotted for your speaker is two minutes. And we are about to start public comment. And we're gonna have the pledge. The pledge allegiance. And then. We do the Latin acknowledgement. And now we'll have the Latin acknowledgement.
We recognize that we are presently on the land so that Chachaniamuwekma, Karkin, Aloney peoples. And acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
All right. And now we will have the roll call. Dr. Hurst.
Thank you, President Christian. President Christian.
Present.
Trusty Clerk Gonzalez-Foy.
Present.
Trusty Reckler.
Good evening, present.
Trusty Phillips.
Here.
Trusty Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, present.
Trusty Miles.
Present.
Trusty Sampaña.
Present.
All present and accounted for.
All right, thank you. And now we will have the report out from closed session.
Yes, from closed session, the board voted to accept the settlement of case number C I V. M S C one, nine, zero, two, one, nine, six by unanimous vote. Also, we'd like to report out that the vote, the board voted to approve the readmission. Of case number two, one, two, two, zero, eight by unanimous vote. That concludes our report out.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hurst. And now we'll proceed on with the meeting. Uh, we're. Going to get ready to go to public comment. And, um. Do we have public coming on in-house?
Our first public comment is Ellie Vargas.
Hello. Uh, my name is Ellie and I am the mother of a fifth grader and a second grader at Washington Elementary. You may have heard that last Friday, we had our Hispanic Heritage Celebration. And it was a night of dance performances, singing, food, and very joyful celebration. Trusty Reckler, I'm so glad you got to be there to see it, to experience it, and to feel the pulse of our school community. We had a completely packed house and the energy of the community was absolutely electric. After the isolation of COVID and the rough year we had last year with leadership. Last Friday showed that Washington is rebounding and even stronger. Thank you all for all you have done to support our school. I mentioned I have a fifth grader. When Salome started at Washington, her kindergarten class was the first of the fully dual language immersion classes. So next year, when Salome enters sixth grade, Washington will be, for the first time, a one hundred percent dual language immersion elementary school. Thank you for your commitment as a board to DLI. It brings a layer to education that is invaluable in this globally connected world. I have two asks for you tonight as a school board. Washington, even with our strong community, still needs a lot of support. I understand we have some candidates for principal and the interviews will begin next week. I am. Hopeful, cautiously hopeful that one of them will be a good fit and I look forward to learning more about them. Thank you for the district efforts in finding us these candidates. However, we are still down teachers. Please don't take the foot off the gas with finding us qualified teachers. We lost a lot of families last year and I'm worried we will lose even more families if we cannot create. The bare minimum structure and scaffolding essential to hold up the education that families expect from their elementary schools. My second ask is that this board continue to support the Spanish DLI program throughout the district. Elementary, middle school, and high school. While I don't know if this is true, there are rumors that the DLI programs at Coramatsu and El Cerrito High could be discontinued. And I'm pleading with you to continue supporting them to continue building out this great program. Thank you very much.
Our next po. Our next public comment is Mark Shawls.
Uh, good evening, board. And we'll get straight to the point. The district published on October seventh an email and currently on the district website at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash W C C U S D dot net. College and career the following. Uh, quote, "All high school seniors must complete one of the following forms to graduate, and those forms are the F A F S A, the C A D A, and a waiver form." The district publications also cite the relevant education code, which I assume district personnel have read and understood. But here's what the California Education Code five, one, two, two, five point seven actually says relative to the requirement to complete one of those forms. Quote, "A pupil who does not fulfill the requirements shall not be penalized or punished, and this section shall not affect a pupil's ability to graduate," unquote. So I ask, why does the district maintain the position that students must fill out one of the forms to graduate? When the law states graduation cannot be affected if a pupil doesn't fulfill the requirements of the cited code? So based upon the facts presented, retractions through the same means and with the same visibility and duration that the district promoted. Its contradictory position are appropriate. The district must openly and clearly correct itself and clarify that graduation will not be affected if a senior does not fulfill the requirements of California Education Code five, one, two, two, five point seven. Lack of any such course, um, communication. Is further evidence supporting the proposition that leadership in this district cannot be trusted as voiced by so many others recently. So please be models of right behavior and correct your error. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Marie Bowles.
The last weekend for homecoming, Pinole Valley High School had another sold out. Stadium. The reason we have sold out stadiums pretty much every weekend now is because we don't have adequate seating for the students at our school. This last weekend, the visitor side of the stadium seating was fully opened up. This does not provide adequate seating for our stadium. Dr. Hurst, you sent an email on Thursday, October sixth at six fourteen PM to trustee Reckler. In response to her inquiries in which he stated that Mr. Freeze. Is looking at options and that he is still considering some things and that he had shared that the cost of the rentals of the bleachers would be extremely high. You included him for comment, but we, the community, have not heard anything from him in writing. Nor in person. I realize that the cost of the bleacher rentals is high, but we offered several other solutions to which he has not responded. You are putting the cost on the families and the students of not having adequate seating in their stadium for school events. You can't put a cost on students not being able to attend games at their own school because tickets are not available since someone signed off on seating that was inadequate when the new facility was added to our stadium. A solution needs to be identified and implemented to provide the number of seats that we previously had in our stadium. Could you please, board, look into this and, Dr. Hurst, look into why there is no solution? I've presented and. I've heard from many members of the community, several solutions, including people bringing their own chairs so that our kids can attend their events at the school. Lots of venues have people with the chair on their back. Why can't we do the same? We have the space for it. I've approached Mr. Freeze over there. I've gotten no response from him either in writing or in person, and he sees me every week or every two weeks at this meeting. He obviously doesn't care. Could you please, board, look into what can be done? Thank you.
Our next public comment is Becca Guerrero.
Hello, my name is Becca Guerrero. I'm deaf. These are my interpreters for tonight. I'm also a parent of two, previously two students at Washington Elementary School. Now my oldest is over at Carmatzuet Middle School and my youngest is in third grade at Washington Elementary School. I'm here tonight. Thank you for the great, for, to Ellie for the great introduction. And our community is growing and I wanted to express some concerns about the DLA or DLI. Pathway. And we want to continue to have a strong, we continue, we continue to have a strong commit or community there, program there. And we need to have more teachers, more people involved. Because the DLI pathway is bilingual, Spanish and full immersion, Spanish and English. So we have three schools. We have. Car, uh, Carmatzo. El Cerrito High School. And Washington Elementary School. And other feeder schools as well. I would love to know what are your plans specifically for the Spanish DLI program for five, let's say, five to ten year plan? To ensure that this program continues to be strong in the community. And that we have enough staff, teachers, and whatnot for all of our students. Thank you.
Our next public comment is David Flores. David Flores.
Hi, I'm going to ask that I actually be able to speak later when the, uh, when Mindful Life Project is addressed, if I could do that. All right, thank you.
Our next public comment is Zalon Harrison.
Good evening, board and Superintendent Dr. Hurst. How you guys doing this evening? Um, two things I would like to talk to you guys, well, say tonight. One thing was I attended, um, LCAP and ASAP meeting over the week and I, um, last week and this week. And I realized that we are a voting, um, member of LCAP. And that I feel hasn't been happening in the appropriate process. So can you board members ensure that all parents or. All parent groups that are allowed to vote on the LCAP, that procedure is happening because I don't feel it's happening accordingly like it should. And that the ASAP has had an opportunity to vote and, um, advise on what programs were passed under the budget that supports our children. So can you please look into that and make sure that you guys are following, um, things that are supposed to be happening per the LCAP in the law? For black parents on that, um, committee. Another thing I wanted to talk about with Dr. Hurst, thank you for, um, responding and meeting, getting, um, setting up a meeting with us. To address our special board meeting that Jamila and Mr. Hat brought up that we really need to have. And thank you for, um. Responding and including other groups so it will not be isolated to a one group. So we can find out as a community what's going on in this district for our children. Where is the budget? Is it, we've been told there is no budget for our kids. We've been told a lot of things. So to get clarity. On what this district is going to do to change educational outcomes for black students is very important. So thank you for responding. To the community and the ASAP and APAC parents that reached out to you and that, and I appreciate that. So thank you. That's all.
President Christian. Ask a question. Just for fairness. If we're gonna let one person speak when their item comes up. Can we not give everyone the same option? Because it's not fair. To do anything other than treat everybody the same. And I don't have any problem with him speaking later, but I would just like you to do the same thing for everybody. So, so maybe you want to let everyone in the Zoom and in the room know that they have an item. That. They can speak when their item comes like it used to be in the old days.
All right, thank you. And we will move on and it's valid.
Our first public comment on Zoom is Ellen Bailey, Bailey. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much for taking my call. Um, I'd like to thank the district for celebrating unity today, today. A celebration of kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. My daughter was incredibly excited. To wear orange to second grade. I'm speaking because on September twenty-third, the district received a letter from the Contra Costa County Office of Education. Noting that the district is no longer fiscally healthy and is unable to meet its financial obligations. In a communication on October eleventh, the district acknowledged that the county's fiscal advisor, Jevetta Cleveland, now has stay and rescind power. This is a direct consequence of the board's inability to do its job. The board took an unpopular vote in March on a reduction in force measure to bring our district to greater fiscal health. The measure failed due to the inability of three of our trustees to make a tough vote that would help maintain local control. And secure a stable financial future for W C C U S D's children. It's as simple as money in, money out. This district makes its money on enrollment and attendance. Enrollments are down and attendance is poor, and this is not unique to us. Every trustee represents an area. Every trustee should care what attendance and enrollment looks like in their area. Every member of the district deserves transparency about how significantly enrollments and attendance have declined and whether or not staff reductions have occurred in equivalent percentages at our sites. It is clear where our district is likely headed. You thought the risks were unpopular. We may be talking about site closures in the near future. Thank you to my trustee for making a very unpopular vote. It was really the only fiscally responsible vote to maintain local control. And keep our district moving towards more secure financial footing. You have all lost your control. You need to get this house in order by improving your own personal understanding. Of our dire financial state of affairs. The agenda should be set so that budget concerns and efforts to address them come at the start of every meeting. It should be honest and clearly communicated and supported with real numbers disaggregated by area such that all families are aware of potential impact to sites and services in our community. Thank you.
Why did you say that?
Because I believe it.
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. So we just finished quarter one, starting quarter two, and I feel like I'm starting quarter number four. I am exhausted after these first nine weeks. But I want to thank my colleague and friend, Michelle Namis Rayford at Pinole Valley High School for her recent article entitled. Use three I's to rediscover your purpose for teaching. And that is what was your inspiration for teaching, the influence that we have as teachers. And the lasting impact that we have on our students. So in, in conclusion, she says, "Teachers, as Dr. Thomas TJ John said, don't let external music affect your internal lyrics of life." The music may be chaotic and loud. It may not even sound like music at all. And the lyrics of life keep changing in the broken system of education. Do not let that distract you. Do whatever is necessary to rediscover your purpose, rediscover your inspiration, your influence, and your impact. And shift your focus to what keeps you coming in day after day. Know your power, your passion, and your purpose, and let that be the light that guides you on your heroic journey to inspire. Influence and leave a lasting impact on this generation. When I read that article two days ago, I really, really needed that because of how I was feeling. I also want to share, we need to give each other, um, our flowers. We need to affirm each other in the moment, right now, not in silos, but sometimes in front of our colleagues. And so. I did this the other day or last week at our anti-racism PD for Mr. The Hill. I told him, I said, hey, you took my vanilla ice cream presentation and turned it into a ice cream sundae. I has been in here for twenty-five years as an educator. I can learn from this young man. He's inspiring. He's encouraging. He has passion. And so I just wanted out loud to everybody in the community who's listened to give him his flowers and to thank him for inspiring me.
Our next public comment is Don Gosney. Please unmute yourself.
Once again, we have an agenda item in front of us with a goal of reinventing the oversight of our bond program. There's somewhere in the neighborhood of seven hundred million dollars left in the kitty, but that's still close to two billion dollars shy of what's needed to address the remaining schools that are falling down around our kids. I understand this discussion of the new board policy, item E six, may be put off till another meeting. That's true. It's great news because any vote tonight, especially an uninformed vote, could have a detrimental effect on our community for the next decade or longer. There are a lot of dominoes ready to fall and we don't need someone to knock over the first one and start a chain reaction that can't be undone. The past sixteen hours, I've sent twenty-three pages of commentary and maybe twice that much in background information. This is an extremely complex issue that deserves careful scrutiny and consideration. Thank goodness that this is a place where people go to learn because each member of the board owes it to the community to hunker down and go to school to learn about the bond program and the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. The bond program isn't nearly as sexy as mask mandates, heap of filters, uh, systems, or even contract negotiations. But those seven hundred million dollars belong to the nearly three thousand, three hundred thousand people living in West County. And many of us would prefer that the funds be spent where it can be doing the most good. And that's where this board policy is so important. First and foremost, we need to be sure that the oversight of the program will be, will be independent. That's a foreign word to some board and staff members, and for some, it's even a swear word, but you all need to get used to it and embrace it because it's the law. Plus, it's the right thing to do. Second, we need a policy that ensures that the CBOC has the tools they need to do their job. One of those tools is actually volunteers to serve on the board. The board needs to find and embrace ways to be more inclusive rather than exclusive. They need to ask themselves what they can do to fully staff the CBOC. In the past couple of years, the appearance in the community is that staff and the board have been working overtime to slam the door on oversight and the volunteer is willing to provide that oversight. Perhaps this is something that can be rethought by the board. Let it, let that be your legacy. Forget about those expensive plaques with your names on them sitting on the walls of the new schools. That's just vanity. Let your legacy be that you rebuilt this trust that the district desperately needs for the community you're, they're supposed to serve. Lastly, I once again implore you to carve out the necessary time to sit with people like me that can help, help educate you about the bond program.
Our next public comment is Denise Steen. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Dr. Hurst, board trustees, and President Christian. I'm Denise Steen, principal of Collins Elementary School and a board member of W C C A A Administrators Association. I wanted to bring some brag to the board in the midst of our tension around potential financial woes. First, once again, I want to talk about the wonderful things that are happening at Collins. Our PTA is rocking our parents having their first fundraiser, raising funds for classroom supplies, off-campus study trips, hooray, and assemblies. Our resident artist slash teacher, Mrs. Carlos, has set up a Dia de los Muertos altar at the front of the hallway. Our resident gardener teacher, Miss Cease, is expanding our garden and getting Pinole's Garden Club involved to help plant, harvest, and teach our students the job of getting their hands dirty. I had a teacher out sick for days and Collins teachers volunteered to take extra students into their classrooms so that their academics would not be disrupted. And after our first round of benchmark assessments, Collins teachers outdid themselves and our math gro- math growth goal of sixty-five percent by reaching eight, seventy-seven percent growth. Teachers are showing up every day and giving a hundred percent to the rigors of teaching and working hard to support students' social emotional well-being. Now, secondly, I want to speak as a board member of W C C A A and say, my colleagues are also expressing great accomplishments across the schools in this district. There are great things happening in all our schools. Staff are showing up. Teachers are not stopping teaching. Admin are covering classes and keeping students and staff safe. We are all giving our all. I hope you see this. I hope you see us. Thanks for your time. Peace.
Our next public comment is Jose De Leon. Please unmute yourself.
Um, good evening, school board, uh, uh, Dr. Hurst. Well, I don't know how to follow up, uh. Miss Steen's statement other than continuing the thoughts that all the staff at all the sites are working very hard in conjunction with district office. Uh, we urge the district office to continue visiting the sites and seeing all the wonderful things that are happening. Uh, teachers working additionally hard in some situations when staffing is not up to par. We also want you to keep in mind. We also want you to keep in mind that academic alignment, security, physical and social, emotional, and support staff needs are always an essential thing to keep in the forefront of all everyone's planning. Our sites will continue to work hard and continue to plan, looking forward at the upcoming school year and looking beyond. So again, thank you for collaborating with us and also recognizing that there are still a lot of needs that we need to work on. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Gustavo Aguilera. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, um, I was looking at something in closed session, Agenda Item A four, something about a disciplinary on district employee. If the district goes forward with that, I know it probably got pulled. But I know the district CBO is putting my name out there. I used to be a former employee, and if that continues, I am going to sue the district for defamation of character. I spoke to the CBO before the incident, and the CBO disregarded my comment. So, and it's basically because he feels that an individual like myself can afford professional development for staff in his department. So again, think it through before this goes through. Because it's not right for you to reprimand some employee for me trying to send one of your staff members for professional development. Also, I have another comment in regards to mindful life for Grand Elementary, but in regards to this, I will sue the district for defamation of character if, if it continues to go through. Because I pay out of my pocket to send some of, some individual out of your district for professional development. And then I know what that individual said to kind of bring the individual down.
Please conclude your comment.
You shouldn't treat individuals or staff.
Our next public comment is Eric Gutierrez. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. Good evening, respected members of the board. Dr. Hurst, pleasure to be here. My name is Eric Gutierrez. I am a WCC USD graduate, Kennedy High, class of two thousand eight, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the International Academy, Richmond High School, and the continuation of our program. When I was a high school student, I was a little unsure of what I wanted to do with my life. However, it wasn't until I met Mr. Julio Frankie, Kennedy Principal of Richmond High, and, and of course, Mr. Mark Moran, math teacher, that they really inspired me to actually become a math teacher. Most importantly, they inspired me to become a teacher to serve this community. Because of this, you know, this is where I call home. I really wish though that, you know, back in the day, they had existed a newcomer program, like the one we're currently sustaining at Richmond High. And let's face it, the traditional ELD program is really not meeting the, the needs of all of the newcomer immigrant students. Now, being part of this team, International Academy, represents a tremendous accomplishment for itself and for our immigrant community as well. It represents a step forward into building a more inclusive and supportive society. This academy reflects the academic values and ideals that I could only wish for when I was a Kennedy student. This is one of the greatest advantages of an international school. You know, we're teaching A two G requirements while teaching students necessary English skills through project-based learning. And at this point, I would like to thank you, Dr. Hurst, for taking the time to physically visit our academy last week. Your presence on campus really represented a step forward into making this program a sustainable way of welcoming newcomer immigrant students who are here, doing no harm to anyone, but instead is looking for better opportunities, you know, undoubtedly, if they're alive. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Ethan Sorcher. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Ethan Sorcher, and I teach fifth grade up on Talvin K eight. You are in a challenging position, and I empathize with you. We're all in the same position. Last month, Assistant Superintendent Larisha Martin told the board that in her estimation, a teacher needed between two and four days to get to know their students and prepare their classroom. With respect, I wonder, when was the last time she or any of you got to know students or prepared a classroom? Every student in the district can name their teacher. Again, with respect, how many students can name their superintendent or their trustee? The educational outcomes used to measure the district's performance depend on the people in our classrooms and at our school sites. Better educational outcomes will improve enrollment and attendance levels. You don't need a theory of action or a design thinking methodology to understand that. You can't put students first if you put staffing last. Tonight, you'll hear an update from Dr. Hurst on our staffing and safety. He'll tell you we have over four hundred classified vacancies and over fifty certificated vacancies. He'll share with you several strategies he and his team are using to address these issues. Notably absent from this list will be exercising the levers of a capitalist free market economy. When the supply of a good or service is low, the price rises to meet demand. Tomorrow, your negotiating team will meet with UTR to respond to our last, best, and final offer. Work with our unions rather than against them to recruit the most qualified and skilled professionals to our district and retain the ones we have. We are not seeking a merit-based raise. We are seeking a cost of living adjustment that reflects the increases in the Consumer Price Index since our contract expired. This is an objective metric that is not subject to negotiation. The average teacher in San Ramon Valley Unified makes nearly twenty-five thousand dollars more each year than the average teacher here, and they are actively recruiting our staff. We need you to pay us enough to live, or we will be forced to leave for a place that does. Thank you.
In our last public comment is Rodney Brown. Please unmute yourself.
I'd like to say good evening, everybody. This is Rodney Alamo Brown, community advocate here in the city of Richmond, California. Got some wonderful news to share with everybody. A young man by the name of Tony McAdoo will be playing in the Blue Grey All-American Bowl in Dallas, Texas, in the Cowboy Stadium. This particular game has actually produced a lot of NFL players, in particular, Kansas City Chiefs quarterback Pat Mahomes. McAdoo was selected as amongst other athletes that participate in football within our West Country Cross United five school district. So the deserving honor is really a wonderful thing to be selected to participate in this particular bowl game. There's a lot of pomp and circumstance that goes associated with it, and we're really, really elated to allow Mr. McAdoo. So on behalf of SoCal Ball Sunday, we're going to sponsor him and make sure he and his family get to the game, and we'll pay for his airfare and his lodging and all that good stuff so that he can have a wonderful time and a great, unique experience. The ball game, of course, was canceled because of COVID, so they're just now getting back into fruition and things are back on target. So we're deeply honored, and you all should be honored as well to have Mr. McAdoo represent the West Country Cross United School District and playing in this particular bowl game. Thank you so much.
That concludes public comment.
All right. Thank everyone for giving the public comment for this evening. And as we continue to move through the agenda, we have agenda review and adoption, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We would like to pull, the staff would like to pull Items E three and also Items E six. Again, that's Items E three and Items E six.
All right, E three and E six. Are there any other changes?
With no more changes, President Christian, I'll move that we approve the agenda with those two items removed.
All right. The move has been second. And now to the vote. Trustee Miles.
Miles, yeah.
Trustee Supanha.
Supanha, yes.
All right. And then we have Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez, yes.
All right. Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
All right, Trustee Smith Foal.
Smith Foles, yes.
All right, Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
All right, and myself, a yes. All right. Agenda view has been adopted, and now we go on to approval of minutes of September the twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, and October the fifth, twenty-twenty-two. Get a motion to approve both of those.
President Christian, I'll move that we approve both sets of minutes.
All right.
Smith Foles, second.
Second, all right. And now to the vote. Trustee Miles.
Miles, yeah.
Trustee Supanha.
Supanha, yes.
All right, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez, yes.
All right, Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
All right, Trustee Smith Foal.
Smith Foles, yes.
All right, and Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
All right, and myself, a yes. All right, agenda review has been adopted. Yeah, the minutes were adopted, and now we go to the resolution.
Now, sorry, excuse me, Resolution Number two-two-two-three slash thirty in recognition of October as Filipino-American History Month. Now therefore be resolved that the West Country Cross Unified School District Board of Education does hereby adopt Resolution Number forty-two dash twenty-twenty-one to recognize Filipino-American History Month and to mark the achievements and contributions of Filipino-Americans in West Country Cross the County and throughout the United States of America. Back to you, President Christian.
All right, thank you. Are there any? Need a motion?
A motion that we approve Resolution Number two-two-two-three dash three-zero Filipino-American History Month.
All right.
Reckler will second.
And it's been second. And here we go to vote, and we start with Trustee Miles.
Miles, yeah.
All right, Trustee Supanha.
Supanha, yes.
All right. And Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez, yes.
All right. Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
All right, Trustee Smith Foal.
Smith Foles, yes.
Trustee Phillips. All right, and myself, a yes. All right. And now we will proceed on with the C, the consent item. Are there any changes? Trustee Reckler.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to pull from Contract C four, only curriculum associates. I ready for brief presentation.
Okay, C four. Are there any other?
President Christian, I would like to pull C nine.
C nine?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. Now, is there a motion to adopt the consent?
President Christian, I'll move that we adopt the consent items with C nine and the contract Trustee Reckler pointed out to.
Okay, this has been moved by Clerk Gonzalez Hoi. Second.
Reckler will second.
All right, second by Trustee Reckler. All right, and now to the vote. Trustee Miles.
Miles, yeah.
All right, Trustee Supanha.
Supanha, yes.
All right. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez, yes.
All right. Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, and Trustee Smith Foal.
Smith Foles, yes.
All right, and Trustee Phillips?
Nay.
All right, and myself, a yes. All right. The consent calendar is adopted. And now we go to the superintendent report.
President Christian. If it's appropriate, I actually would like to, I would like to make a motion that we do Item E eight prior to the superintendent report because we have family members in the, in the audience present. Can I, is that appropriate to me? Can I make that motion? Okay, I would like to make a motion that we moved Item E eight, which is renaming Hercules Middle School Middle High Sports Complex prior to the superintendent report. Thank you.
Smith Foles, second.
All right. And now we go to the vote. Trustee Miles.
Miles, yeah.
All right. Trustee Supanha.
Supanha, yes.
All right, thank you, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez, so yes.
All right, thank you. Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
All right. And then Trustee Smith Foal.
Smith Foles, yes.
All right, and Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
All right, and myself, yes. All right. So we go right to that item?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I really appreciate it. I'm going to ask if admin staff, if you could bring up the data on that item, please? Thank you for your patience, everyone. We're bringing up the data slide. Can you make that a little bit bigger as well? We wanted to take the opportunity first to thank the board for moving this item up. We have Ms. Montgomery in our midst, so I wanted to take the opportunity to say good evening to you and that we honor you this evening as well and just hello to you as well. We wanted to just share with the board and the community that's listening that the Hercules community members, students, staff, and leadership from Hercules Middle and High School have requested that the board consider renaming the sports complex. And we talked about this, that the sports complex would be the football field, the baseball field, and gymnasium because that's what Coach G coached at the Hercules Middle School and High School after Gerald Montgomery also called Coach G. On August the third, this year, the board appointed trustees Jamila Smith Foles and President O three Christian to serve on the ad hoc committee to consider this request. Also part of the committee was the superintendent, Principal Ryan Shaw, Principal Raquel Colbert, Mr. Michael Booker, and Mrs. Rosa Carne. and Mrs. Rosa Cornejo. The committee met several times. We sent out a survey to Hercules Middle School, to Hercules High School, and also we sent the survey to the feeder schools within that family of schools and to the Hercules community. The survey was distributed electronically and also we had the survey hand-delivered to some of the feeder pattern. The survey received, as you can see, a total of nine hundred and thirty, actually it's nine hundred and thirty-seven responses. And as you can look at the the data overall, you can see that ninety-eight point eight percent was in favor. Uh what I will share with you is that since I've been here, that's the highest response from a survey that we've received um in number, but also when you look at the percentage in favor, that's certainly the highest percentage in favor of any item that I've seen since I've been here as well, so I wanted to point that out. And based on this data, the recommendation is to move forward renaming the sports complex, the baseball field, the football field and the gymnasium to Gerald Montgomery Sports Complex, also Miss Coach G. And I would just ask if there is um one of the other committee members, either President Christian or trustee Smith Foe that wants to add anything else before I turn it back over to the president for questions.
Uh Dr. Hurst, I think we're prepared to take any questions that the board may have about process or next steps. I think we're willing and able to answer that as an ad hoc committee. Um I want to say uh good evening to Ms. Montgomery. I can't see her, but I want to let her know that I recognize that she's in the room and any other family members that are in the room. Thank you for coming.
And with that, I'll turn it back over to President Christian for questions, sir.
All right, and we go to questions. Any questions? If no questions. Need a motion?
It would be my honor and pleasure to move this item to rename the sports complex, the Hercules High School Sports Complex after Coach G. Uh that Dr. Hurst, if I need to have the full name, just let me know, but for everyone, I'm just using the um the adoration we have, which is Coach G. Thank you, trustee Gonzalez Hoi.
I'll second President Christian.
Okay. Any comments?
I just want to say thank you to everyone that participated in the committee. I want to say thank you to the Hercules family. Um on just one uh Facebook post, Dr. Hurst, there was five thousand three hundred and forty-nine people that we reached. So this is a community, yes. The community wants to see this happen. The Hercules community, and I'm sure every community wants to honor Coach G because he did not just impact Hercules, but he worked in this district for a very long time and impacted generations of people. So again, board, I urge you to vote yes for this, and thank you, Dr. Hurst, for moving this swiftly. I'm complete.
All right, thank you, uh trustee Phillips.
Um I just wanted to say to you, um I really didn't know um your husband. Um but I did know of him. Uh and I know that when somebody spends a lot of time working and volunteering, uh basically, um that can be a lot. Uh so you shared, yeah, you really did. You shared them with the schools, you shared them with the community. And so um although no one is trying to repay and no one could repay for everything that you and your family have given, um I do want to say thank you very much for the gift that you have given because you have definitely given a gift.
Thank you, President Christian. Ms. Gomar, Gomar, Montgomery, sorry, I wanted to just thank you because you shared your husband with us for many, many years. And every time I would see him, he was just such a bright spot to the school. I remember in one of the graduations, we were laughing with him because the principal said an off-comment about the school, and he got so riled up, he was ready to talk back and say things and uh we were laughing with him, Dr. Hurst, trustee Smith Foe and I, and uh he had such pride, not just about the school, but of his work. Um and I know that him and you and your family have touched thousands of our students in a positive way, so I just want to thank you and him um because I know that he's listening to us as well, so thank you, and I'm really proud that we're doing this work um naming this place after him and um that trustee Smith Foe and President Christian did this work to make it happen with you. Thank you.
And I just want to say I had the privilege to work with uh Coach G. Um also you have uh Hector Gonzalez that's over there, work close with Coach G and I'm also um Javier, you know, and and I worked with all with with them, and so, so we all have a good close relationship. Uh we was well-connected and so I want to say, man, and you know, I could just hear his voice ringing in my ear, Christian, Christian, yeah. I know Coach G, man, but yeah, uh yeah, congratulations. All right, now we go to the vote. Uh trustee Miles.
Miles here.
All right, trustee Sapania.
Sapania, yes.
All right, clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
All right, thank you, uh trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
All right, thank you. Um trustee uh Smith Foe.
Absolutely, yes.
All right, uh trustee Phillips.
Yes.
All right, and myself, yes, and it passes. All right.
President Christian, I was wondering if if Ms. Montgomery felt comfortable, if she would like to say a few words, if you would allow her to say a few words if she would like.
Yes.
Um good evening, board and everyone present. Um tonight is special. When you share somebody, it's nice to see that you share a life with somebody, it's nice to see that their life meant something because a lot of times when people leave us, you know, it's just the immediate family that remembers them and um I guess what I'm really excited about because we are Titans for Life is um that my my grandkids and my kids will be able to coach and play and look up there and see his name and um have a pride in a legacy that he left. And um I thank um Jamila and Michael, I always call him Booker, um for all of their support. And I thank you all for um your support and your recognition of knowing that he was all about his school, his kids, I mean, uh he had a lot of kids, but by the time he passed, he had thousands of kids. Um and he he would nickname each of the kids. He had a way of, my daughter-in-law would say this, he had a way of establishing a personal relationship with each person he ran across. If that was giving you a nickname because he couldn't remember how to say your name correctly or if you did something that he would laugh with you about and that would become your nickname, but he had um personal individual relationship, relationships with each of the kids and the students and the uh teachers and the admin that he touched, and this is a culmination of his life. Um and I appreciate you all and thank you all for this honor and my family and I are going to continue supporting Hercules. My middle son is now up there um as a long-term sub and is going to, is working on getting his masters or his credentials. Uh my other son is a site supervisor. I have grandkids that are there. I have grandkids that can't wait to get there. Um so um it's, it's not, we're not going to let it stop with him. We're going to continue supporting Hercules. Thank you very much.
All right, and now we go on to the superintendent report.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Can we bring up the superintendent's report, please? I think we have to get rid of that one. Thank you very much. So as you look at the the first slide, you can see a number of pictures uh here. Um and I think there were a couple of trustees that were, uh if you could back up just for a second, that were involved in in this um activity uh with Conscious Kitchen sponsoring as well. And also um you can see Barbara Jealouson there and you can see the principal of Betty Reed Soskins. Uh we wanted to just acknowledge uh this event um that happened, it was well-prepared and that partnership as well. Can we go to the next slide? We also wanted to recognize uh today as Unity Day. Uh Unity Day is the cemetery event of National Bullying Prevention Month observed in the United States on the third or fourth Wednesday of October. It's been recognized in the United States since two thousand eleven. To participate in Unity Day, individuals, schools, communities and businesses wear or share orange uh to unite for kindness, acceptance and inclusion to prevent students from being bullied. And just a fact, one in five school-aged children report being bullied at school. I did commit to wearing my orange uh today and I had to go out to several places to find an orange tie. So I just wanted to make sure that we put that before everyone. Uh today is Unity Day and bullying awareness as well. Next slide. We also wanted to um put out for everyone that today, uh this month is actually National Custodian Appreciation Appreciation Day. Uh we wanted to give our a hand clap uh to all of our custodial staff across the district. Uh we wish we could put everybody's uh picture up there and acknowledge everyone. We selected three of our custodial staff. But we do want to take the time to say thank you, thank you, thank you for all of your incredible uh work, your hard work, your effort in keeping our schools and buildings clean and state safe, and we want to say that we appreciate you. Next slide. We also want to put before everyone that this month of October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And really, uh we all know that Breast Cancer Awareness Month is really about raising the awareness about the impact of breast cancer, and I do see some of our board trustees even wearing the the pink lapel pin, so thank you for acknowledging. And next slide. And we also want to um first tip my hats off to um Dr. Huey who's leading uh the effort around college and career and our pathways across the district. Uh we did have a college and career night. Uh it was hosted uh Thursday, October the thirteenth. And it was five to seven P M. and it was held at El Cerrito High School for middle and high school students and for those who are interested in learning about pathways, but also opportunities and resources available for them. There were more than two hundred students and families there. There are over fifty colleges represented there as well and career partners. And they shared information regarding admissions, scholarship opportunities and career benefits. Also, again, want to uh tip my hat off to Dr. Huey. Um she has internalized the division uh on pathways, not just at the high school and middle school, but really what it looked like at the elementary school as well. So thank you for sponsoring this, Dr. Huey. And next slide. So earlier you heard in the public comment and you heard uh Principal Jose De Leon come on. He's the principal of Richmond High School. And I had uh several of his teachers uh that sent me an email uh to come and visit uh the school. And specifically, they wanted me to come and visit the International Program, International Academy. And I'll do that whenever I get an invite from a principal or a teacher, I will put it on my calendar and I will show up. And it was a a great visit, a great day, and I just want to share a couple of experiences that I had while I was there at the International Academy. So the first slide. Next slide. So I was really uh captivated by this teacher, Laura Garigas. She's a Spanish, a Spanish speaker teacher. And uh what she was doing, she was doing a social emotional learning activity with her students. She had them in a circle in the classroom and she uh first started off by explaining the activity. Um and then what I really liked is that she then started checking for understanding to make sure they understood the activity even before going into the activity. But then she took a step further and she modeled the activity with a student. So she actually sat down in a chair and it was two chairs facing one another. And what she was really trying to get the students to understand is that when someone is communicating to you that you really have to pay attention and listen. And it was called a mindful listening activity. And what she was trying to get them to do is to understand, you really have to key into what uh this person is saying. So what she said is she had um some questions and she had a question about you're gonna listen for two minutes for this person that's sitting in front of you and they're gonna talk. You can't say anything, you just have to listen intently for two minutes. And the questions there were, the first, the first person had to share was, how are you? How do you feel? What are you excited about today? And what do you need to get through the day? So those were the four questions. So that first person just had to engage for two minutes in just talking and the other person sitting across just had to listen. And then the timer uh would finish for the two minutes and then that person that was talking had to stop. And then the other person that was sitting across from them had one minute to repeat precisely what they heard. And um it was really interesting. Um it was only Spanish uh speaking in the class, so um I'm rusty in Spanish, even though I've taken uh a lot of Spanish through my years, but I had to have um Mr. De Leon uh translate for me. So thank you, sir. But he was really explaining to me what the teacher was saying in answering those questions. So she did a really nice job modeling. And then uh the student actually repeated everything that the teacher said, so he was really listening also. So I wanted to just give my um hat off to that teacher, Ms. Garigas. Uh thank you for sharing that activity with your students and thank you for allowing me to be a part of that. Next slide. So before we play these videos, I want to introduce another teacher in the International Academy, again at Richmond High School. Ms. Legon, uh she's a chemistry teacher. And she's gonna explain what's happening here, and then you're gonna see the students in the right-hand side actually demonstrate uh this activity around around combustion. And then you're going to see the students in the right-hand side actually demonstrate, uh, this activity around, around combustion. And they're, uh, using some chemicals to create the combustion, uh, combustion, uh, reaction. And they designed a car as well. And what I really liked in walking in this class is they had a maker space and they didn't, you could tell it didn't cost a lot. You could tell it was just donated objects and the students made these cars. And they was doing this chemistry experience, um, and project around combustion. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Legon to kind of tell you what's going on.
Um, hi, my name is Ms. Legon. I teach chemistry at Richmond High School. Uh, today we are learning about combustion reactions. Students created a rocket car and they're using vinegar and baking soda to model a combustion reaction and learn about that.
Yeah, let's give them a round of applause, even though they're not here. It was really nice to see, um, and in case you didn't know what they're doing, um, in the International Academy is project-based learning. And that's really, uh, something that I, uh, specialized in, in previous districts and really wanting to see, um, K through 12 in our district as well because we do know the students are engaged in those activities when it's project-based and rigorously tied to the standards as well. So hats off to Ms. Legon and, uh, International Academy at Richmond. And we have one more teacher that I wanted to share with you also.
My name is Ms. Legon. I teach.
So before we play the video, just introduce to you, um, another teacher, uh, not in the, in the National Academy. She's actually, um, a health instructor in the Health Academy at Richmond High School, Ms., uh, Michelle Jawad. And, uh, she'll, she'll explain to you what's happening in her class.
So I'm, uh, Michelle Jawad and I am a healthcare instructor here at Richmond High. And we're doing anatomy lesson right now. And so what we're working on is a life-size 2D bodies that they've, um, outlined and named for each class. And they were first studying the organs and their placements and then the bones and their placements for half the body. And now they're going and looking at all 30 bodies from all different classes and writing down what they notice is missing, um, or in anatomical terms, of course. And they're voting on the top three. First one gets a lunch or breakfast party. Second one gets a movie and popcorn. Third one gets treats. So this is a good way for them to learn, uh, anatomy. I was trying to find some hands-on because anatomy can be really hard and boring to learn. And, uh, they're actually learning a lot. I'm reading their homework now and their papers. So, uh, I think they're enjoying themselves.
So rounds off, hand a pause for, uh, Ms. Jawad, please. And just to kind of recap, what they were doing here is you could tell they had, all their students had constructed a, a life-size poster of a skeleton and they had to name, uh, the parts of the skeleton. And she was then going through and having the students test themselves on whether or not they knew the body parts. So really nice activity for the students. So this concludes the superintendent report. I just wanted to share those pieces with you. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Board, any questions? Okay, no questions. Um, Dr. Hurst, we can move to the next item. Which I believe is E1.
So E1, Board, uh, we discussed this item in, uh, closed session. This is case number 222302. And this is the stipulated expulsion case. And we're asking the board to do a roll call vote on this. And just for the public's information, uh, we have learned that through ed code that any expulsion stipulated or regular expulsion has to be voted upon in a public session. So that's why we're doing this now. So we're just asking for a roll call vote.
President Christian, quick question. Do the student trustees vote on these items?
Yes.
Even if they haven't heard the case? They did not hear the case, no? Abstain. Okay. Trustee, uh, Kami, would you mind sharing that again so they can hear?
Yeah, they, and they don't have to abstain either. It's kind of like if you go to a meeting or you miss a meeting, you can still vote on the minutes. Um, we, we cannot exclude their vote. So how they vote is entirely up to them. But it would help to start with a motion.
President Christian, I move that we approve the stimulated expulsion case number 222302.
All right, it's been moved. Is this a second?
It's both seconds.
It's been second, but Smith Foe. All right, and now to the vote. Oh, any questions? Comments? All right, we go to the vote. All right, trustee Miles.
Miles abstain.
All right. Trustee Suppania.
Suppania abstain.
All right. Um, Clark, is on the floor?
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
All right. Uh, trustee Recker?
Recker, yes.
All right, trustee Smith Foe.
Smith Foe's, yes.
All right, and, uh, trustee Phillips.
I know we're in the middle of a vote, um, and I am going to vote yes, but can I ask a question really quick?
Yes.
Is it possible, I know that we can't identify the student, but is it possible for us to say what the code section is that's violated? So, because we're doing this in public and people don't have any context whatsoever and they're just going to be like, they're expelling students. So like, was there a weapon? Was this, I know, but for public consumption? Ms. Huffman, do we have the, the code? Or can you share that?
I don't have that in front. I mean, let me see. Hold on. Hold on just a second. Ms. Huffman, I believe it's ed code section 35146. Or. I would also like to say that in the agenda, it doesn't say what that is, but we have somebody looking it up right now, what the, what that code refers to. I have the number, but not the explanation. All right, I'm going to have, um, Ms. Smith answer what each ed code is for each of the cases. Ms. Smith, can you come off zone, please? Thank you.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so you want the first ed code is 48900A1?
You want anything more than that, sir? It would be nice if someone can just say ed code section X, which is line on campus. Uh, you, you see what I'm saying? Yes, sir. Do you have that, Ms. Smith?
So are you just asking for the behavior, trustee Phillips?
Yes, so specifically what is that, um, code referencing?
So for the first case on the stipulated, um, expulsion agreement, it's referencing, uh, brandishing a weapon on campus.
Point of order, President Christian. I apologize, we're in the middle of a vote. Um, I understand what trustee Phillips is doing, but, uh, and his rescinding, of course. Uh, I was wondering if we could finish the vote and then for the next case, we can continue, uh, to add information, uh, to make sure that we're not setting precedent.
If I may also add, we are all tapering off as we are speaking. The answer to Mr. Phillips' question, um, I know you all know what that was in the ed code. As someone who has no idea, I could not hear the last four words that were said. So that information is still unclear. Thank you.
Can you repeat that, uh, one more time, Ms. Smith?
The ed code for the case that we're referencing is 48915 and is for brandishing a weapon on campus.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so was, was it answered?
Yes, sir, it was answered.
Okay.
And, and thank you staff for the answer. My vote is yes.
All right. Oh, and my vote, yes. And a motion passes. E2. E2.
For E2, uh, we're asking the board to vote for the expulsion case number 222303. And this was to uphold the panel's recommendation. And I allow Ms. Smith to come in and talk about the ed code violation.
The ed code violations for these are 48900A1 and A4, A1, cause, attempted to cause or threaten to cause physical injury, um, and robbery or extortion.
We did not capture the last portion of what you were saying, Ms. Smith. You kind of tapered off, uh, again, can you repeat that one more time, please?
Yes, the second education code is for robbery or extortion.
Robbery or extortion.
Yes.
I'll turn it over to the president for vote.
Are there any questions? All right, need a motion?
President Christian, I move that we, uh, accept expulsion case number 222222303.
All right, it's, there is second?
Smith Foe, second.
All right, it's been moved, it's been second. And now, any comments? Then we go to the vote. Uh, trustee Miles?
Miles abstain.
All right, trustee, uh, Suppania?
Suppania abstain.
All right, clerk Visalasoy?
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
All right, uh, trustee Recker?
Recker, yes.
All right, uh, trustee Smith Foe?
Smith Foe's, yes.
All right, trustee Phillips?
Yes.
All right, and myself, a yes. Motion passes. Now we go to E4.
Thank you, Mr. President. What you have before you is an update from CSBA. And this is title updates for policies that we have that we want to make sure that they align with the titles of CSBA so that when they push out, uh, changes, they come to us bearing their title. So what we're asking is that the board approve to adopt the recommended CSBA titles for the policies listed in the attachment to this item.
Any questions? Any questions?
I do. I have a question on this. So it says in the preces that these are, uh, board policies that are unique to the WCCUSD. They don't align, as I'm reading it and understand, they don't align directly with, uh, the CSBA policy. So if they are renamed, do they align? Does the renaming align with our uniqueness?
If I could check into that, trustee Smith Foe's, you're asking if it if.
Dr. Hurst, that was trustee Recker, not.
Trustee Recker. Can I investigate that and get back to you?
Yes. Of course.
All right, trustee Phillips.
Dr. Hurst, how long do you think it would take you to investigate that and get back to trustee Recker? I can investigate that, uh, by by tomorrow. Okay, I'll move the table this item.
Recker will second that. Oh, wait a minute, I'm, I'm getting parliamentarian training hold for one moment.
I'm sorry. So it's a motion to postpone and we just need to know when you want to postpone it to? The next meeting?
I move the table this item until the next meeting.
Postpone. Thank you. The idea of having your parliamentarian is to make sure we're using the right terminology.
And there's nothing wrong with the terminology I'm using, but okay.
To the next meeting.
The next meeting.
Perfect.
Recker will resecond to postpone until the next meeting.
All right, uh, this is tabled for the next meeting. Postpone to the next meeting. Okay. Student trustee Miles, you have a question?
Yes, actually, I was wondering if changing the names would cause any confusion for anyone who needs to access the documents? Because I, I know they're like similar still because I looked at the list, but I was wondering if that would be made known to people.
Uh, changing the names wouldn't cause any confusion. Anyone that wanted to go into the policy, they could look into policy and see that they are the same.
All right, so now we go to the vote. Uh, trustee Miles?
Miles, yeah.
All right, trustee Suppania?
Suppania, yeah.
All right. Uh, trustee Recker?
Recker, yes.
All right, trustee Smith Foe?
Smith Foe's, yes.
All right, uh, trustee Phillips?
Yes.
All right, and myself, yes. All right. Item is postponed. E5.
So this one, uh, board is before you. These are policies that are no longer in effect. So we're asking that you approve to rescind these policies listed in the attachment.
Are there any questions? Uh, trustee Phillips?
Is it true that board policies are no longer in effect when the board says they're no longer in effect? I think I get your, your point, sir. However, looking at the, uh, the attachment, it talks about, um, let's say for instance, the first one is no longer being used. let's say, for instance, the first one is no longer being used. So what we're saying is that these policies are not being considered. If you're saying that the board has the authority to determine whether or not a policy is in effect, is in effect, I would say that that is accurate.
And until the board says that a policy is no longer in effect, should that policy be removed from the board policies?
I can say, sir, I'm just simply bringing in old policies. Um, I know the conversation that I've had with the board is to update the board on a regular basis on policies that need to be updated. These were pushed out to us by CSBA. If the board decides they want to keep these policies, that's totally up to the board.
I'm tired today, and I'm getting older, so I don't catch everything. But I went to our board policies online, and I looked for each one of these policies. And they were gone. Did I miss something? I mean, I went, I literally looked for each one of them. And I didn't see any of them. Like they had been deleted already. Did I miss something? Did I look in the wrong place?
No, I did the same thing, sir. They're not there. I can share with you that we did not remove those policies.
Can you look for one of them, just to make sure, maybe? Because I, sometimes I put my foot in my mouth, and this might be one of those times.
No, you're accurate. I actually looked myself.
Oh, you saw that they're all gone too?
Yes. And what I said is that staff did not remove those policies.
Did board policies be removed without the board saying remove them?
Uh, as I shared, sir, um, I think we can investigate how those policies were removed. Staff did not remove them. I think I get your point and your message about the board having the final authority about policies and when they should be removed.
I would like to make a motion to postpone this one as well, but there's a comment that I want to make, and I know if I make this motion, I ain't going to be able to make my comment. So I'm going to ask the board president, board president, may I make a comment about one of the policies in specific that has disappeared? A couple of years ago, and this is some context for some folks, a couple of years ago, we had a conversation as a board around program improvement schools. And some of you may remember that kids who are in program improvement schools had preferential rights to transfer to other schools. After No Child Left Behind went out of effect, uh, there were two attempts by previous staff to phase out the preferential transfer rights for children at program improvement schools. And the basis for it was the law had changed. We have a lot of students in schools that were formally designated program improvement. A lot. And we have a lot of students who have done interdistrict transfers. Uh, and frankly, I've never been, uh, one to hide this. My own kids have done that. Okay? Um, and so staff said, well, we could phase this out. We don't have to do this anymore. The board, and this happened twice in previous boards. And, um, the board decided both times that even though No Child Left Behind was not the law anymore, the schools that would have been designated program improvement, and we have schools that would have been twenty years in program improvement. Okay, never got out. That the kids who are in those schools, we wanted to keep codify the preferential transfer rights for them to be able to go to other schools. And this is something that came up more than once, where the board kind of went back and forth about this. And we kept the language specifically because we wanted to make sure that those kids kept their transfer rights because they were rights under No Child Left Behind. So even though the law is no longer in effect, the board decided that there was something in the law that helped kids, and we were going to keep it anyway because we had the authority to do that. So not just, and, and, and because I couldn't read the policy because they were all gone, but I strongly believe the title, the program improvement policy in there is the one that we actually fought to keep, even though the law expired, so these babies didn't lose their transfer rights. So the point that I'm trying to make is just because something has expired, if there's something good in it that will actually help these children, we do have the right as a board to keep it, and we should. So with that, I will now make the motion to postpone. Unless someone else has a comment they would like to make.
I have a, I I have a question, if that's okay. And when I looked at this, I also did check, and I noticed that policies were gone, but I kind of chalked it up because they say in here that this is like a new template that they're working on. And so I was like, all right, I'm sure that, you know, and they're still working out the kinks. But what I wanted to find out is if you could just tell us a little bit about the process of how your office and the software works with CSBA and how that, that filters down. Like, how do you know that changes are coming? If you could just tell us a little bit about the inner workings?
We get periodically updates from CSBA. We'll get an email letting us know that there's new updates, and they'll send us the list in which policies need to be updated. So we get that about three or four times a year.
Okay, well, that's extremely straightforward. Thank you.
President Christian.
Go ahead.
I don't have a problem the way we're running the board meeting tonight. I just want to make sure we're setting a clear precedent because we don't have a timer up. We haven't designated three questions or four questions. We are just kind of going freelance, and I'm okay with that. Just keep that same energy at other board meetings, because this is what we're doing. And again, I don't have a problem with it, but we're setting precedent. I actually would like Dr. Hurst to table this and have you come back to the board with this with more information around it. And I would like to know how it did get removed from board policy. If you can investigate that, because I'm interested in how it's no longer there. I'm complete, President Christian.
Okay.
Trustee Smith Folds, are you seconding trustee Phillips' motion to postpone this item?
Did trustee Phillips make an official motion? If so, yes, I am.
Yes, he did. Thank you.
All right. So now we go straight to the vote. Uh, trustee Miles?
Miles, yeah.
All right, trustee Sapania?
Sapania, yeah.
All right, trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
All right, trustee Smith Fo?
Smith phones, yes.
All right, trustee Phillips?
Yes.
All right, and I'm yes. Okay. Motion passes. E seven.
Good evening, board, family and communities. We are going to be presenting tonight on Mindful Life Project, um, which was, um, a consultant that was assigned.
Can you hold on one second?
Oh, sorry.
When did you work for that? At the beginning or after the presentation?
Okay, we, we have it before the presentation. We're going to reset the time, so, uh, mindful life. I, I don't know who's the person that's supposed to speak.
David Flores.
Good evening, board. Superintendent Hurst, so good to see you in person. Cabinet, it's a pleasure to be here. Um, I don't think we're supposed to speak first, though, so I just want to check. And the leaders are here to answer any questions you might have for us.
You are too far from the microphone, and we are not hearing you.
For sure. Good evening, steam board, superintendent Hurst, cabinet members.
And I'm sorry, are you David Flores? We have to go with the person that signed up for public comment.
Right, we're not, I don't know if this is public comment. We're here to present with Ms. Huffman. So I'm not sure what we're, we're supposed to sit down or be here. I'm not sure what the order is.
So unfortunately, public comment, people have to sign up for public comment. And during public comment, Mr. Flores came forward and asked if he could speak during this item. So that's what the chair allowed.
Hey, good evening. I'm here representing Mindful Life Project. My name is David Flores. I'm the lead trainer. I've worked for Mindful Life Project the last five years. This is my sixth year. Previous to this job, I was working as a classroom teacher at Grant Elementary for eleven years. And I joined this work, uh, because of my deep passion for mindfulness, as it's changed my own life and the lives of many, many kids that I've seen, had the privilege of working with as well. And I'm here to speak on behalf of Grant Elementary so that you all can make the right decision tonight and approve the contract for this year. Um, we've had a hiatus of a few years from Grant Elementary. It was the site where I first discovered mindfulness in, in, in Mindful Life Project in my last two years of teaching. And it completely changed my life, and it led me to this work again that I'm very passionate about. And, uh, Mindful Life Project was abruptly taken away from Grant Elementary a few years ago, as well as a few other schools in West Contra Costa. And it's, it was very saddening to see that uh, services had started. Uh, the principal there, Nazir Haidari, and the community there were a hundred percent on board with our services, ready to go. Uh, services had started, our instructor fully trained, uh, by me as the lead in the department as lead trainer, which I'm happy to answer any questions about our training process. Uh, you know, uh, got, got our instructor ready for the school, and then was abruptly interrupted, uh, interrupting services at the school and hasn't been able to be there for the last couple of weeks or so. So I'm, I'm asking you tonight to please approve so that we can move forward for the benefit of the students, the teachers, and everyone involved in the grant school community who I know are waiting uh, also for your decision tonight, so that we can move forward on this very, very important issue for our students. Thank you.
Now the pres- now the presentation.
All right, good evening, board, parents and community. I am coming before you this morning, this morning, this evening, um, with Mindful Life Project presentation. This was a contract that is set to be at Grant Elementary, and we're bringing this back as an action item before the board. This is going to be presented by myself and Dr. Robert McIntyre. Next slide, please. Upon, um, our, at our last board meeting, it was asked that the videos were reviewed um, from Mindful Life presentations back in twenty nineteen, um, in the contract. And so at that time, I was able to get the video highlights and able to see and review what occurred during um, that, those two board meetings. And some of the things that were mentioned were mindfulness certification, the curriculum, and the training. So Dr. McIntyre and myself met with Mindful Life, and some things that we discussed were the three bulleted items that you see before you. And some things that came from that meeting were, they created programming at various schools across West Contra Costa. Most of the Mindful Life staff are former staff of West Contra Costa or Oakland Unified School District. At their highest point, they had thirteen schools in West Contra Costa. Curriculum is developed and owned by the staff and the board. Materials are one hundred percent owned by Mindful Life. Eighty percent of the staff are African American Latino in twenty nineteen. There have never been any lawsuits. Their work is USF researched. They are currently only charging schools about forty K for five days a week. They have foundation support and grant received, um, an eleven K, eleven thousand dollar grant to supplement the forty thousand. In order for staff to be hired by Mindful Life Project, instructors, um, have to have informal mindfulness training with well-known and regarded institutions or complete mindful life's mindful educator, educator training, which is the mindfulness fundamentals with an understanding of the science of trauma and stress and how mindfulness, mindfulness is scientifically proven to literally rewire the brain and counter stress and trauma. Next slide, please. Um, I also attached for the board and the community some resources that were provided to me, um, from Mindful Life. Next slide, please.
Great. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the, the, the process that we went through, uh, to get here tonight. And then I'll talk about our recommendation and conclude and be available for questions. Uh, the board provided direction, uh, in, in the video, where we, when, uh, actually Larisha and her team went back to, uh, Ms. Huffman and her team went back and reviewed the video, one of the things that was highlighted was the fact that the board actually provided really strong guidance that is, that is in line with what we would consider best-in-class procedures for vetting. And in fact, most of the procedures we use today are in alignment with the direction that was provided by the board uh, during that, that board meeting where they talked about the kinds of things a district should be thinking about before contracting in general. Uh, so I did want to let the board know that, that we heard what the prior board had said, and we've implemented, uh, those things. Now, the, we have updated our procedures to include those, those elements, and those were in place prior to, to coming back to you with this con- contract this year. Um, one of the things that we wanted to note that to date, no specific vendors have been excluded from doing business with the district to date. So we have not taken a vendor and put inactive for cause next to them. However, that doesn't mean we believe that that should stay constant forever. And so part of what we're recommending is, is as of this beginning of this year, we've started an assessment process for all vendor contracts. So every contract initiated by a school site or a department where services are provided at the end of January and the end of April, each person responsible for initiating a contract is responsible for evaluating the efficacy of the services and whether or not they've met their objectives. We will be some, bringing that information back in summary form to discuss with recommendations because we believe we should be using data to make decisions on whether we continue long-term relationships or even short term relationships with vendors. Uh, so, so with that, I just did want to point out that, that they did, that this particular uh, vendor did go through the, uh, request for, uh, proposal or RFQ, request for qualifications process at the beginning of the year, and they did meet the requirements of that, that process, and, and they've managed to make contact with the school site who is requesting their service. Next slide, please. So the staff's recommendation, uh, is not necessarily an evaluation of what we believe in the central office or the business office, the efficacy of this particular proposal is. What, what we're recommending is that the, uh, board honor the school site's request for the services provided by this vendor and that we, the, that the board allow us to bring back the summary evaluations of all of the vendors, not only in this space around social emotional learning, uh, but all spaces, so we can, so we can truly start evaluating our, our, our processes and our vendors and having conversations around where we should be discussing whether or not we want to remove vendors for cause. And, and, and if they're not performing at the level that we're contracting them to or not being good partners with the district. Uh, so that concludes staff's recommendation.
All right, could you, questions? Trustee Phillips?
One of the things that the prior board, and I was on it, but one of the things that the prior board directed staff to do was to set a standard for teaching mindfulness in this district. Before any contracts with Mindful Life Project or anybody else came back for the teaching of mindfulness. for the teaching of mindfulness. So my question is, was a standard set for the teaching of mindfulness in the West Contra Costa Unified School District? Has that work been done?
There, there has not been any expectations or criteria set for teaching mindfulness in West Contra Costa that I am aware of. Um, we have several vendors that use similar practices as Mindful Life and there have not been any set criteria of what our expectation is around mindfulness.
Okay. So just so I'm making sure I hear this. The work of setting criteria or a standard for the teaching of mindfulness in our district has not been done. And we don't actually have any expectation of what folks who teach mindfulness to our children are supposed to be doing. And I'm, and I'm, and if I said that incorrectly, because I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, let me know.
Each, each principal, you know, obviously selects their vendor and then the vendors go through um, the process with business services through procurement. There is nothing listed on the contract that specifically asks questions around mindfulness practices. We don't necessarily have a criteria in place around what that means. Many of our vendors come in with their own set curriculum, their own set methodologies. And obviously, the role of the principal is really to ensure that those methodologies are in line with best practices. So, so there are best practices for mindfulness. And when I did talk to Mindful Life, Life Project, and I actually looked up the practices, they named that those practices are the best practices that they in fact utilize. Um, but in, I, this was a directive back in 2019 that has not been developed from ed services, a set of criteria or practices. But it's the responsibility of the principal to really evaluate their vendors and to en- ensure that they're in line with ed code and best practices um, and that there's no harm um, coming to students in any way with practices that they're doing at the school site.
Two questions and I'm gonna leave it. It's clear that we don't have a standard here. Um, and second, you can't see my face. I'm kind of smiling. Okay. I thought it was the you guys' job to do the evaluation and it was getting away from the whole site thing. So now I'm hearing it's really the job of the principal to make sure. But I thought that's what we were getting away from and it was you all that's supposed to be doing that. The new whole thing, right? Thing that sounds so sophisticated. So, I don't know. It just doesn't sound consistent. That said, I'm done. I'm complete. You have, you have answered my questions. Thank you.
Yes, I'd just like to just share with the, the board. Just an observation and just share with you overall with all contracts. I'm not sure uh, about this particular contract and I just have to be very transparent. I'm not sure, you know, the scrutiny and what's happening here with this particular contract, but I do need to speak up and just share with you that I've laid out a process for all vendors to go through um, a strategic vetting. At the very end of that strategic vetting, there are annual measurable objectives. So every single vendor or contractor or consultant has to own up to those uh, AMOs. Um, and they are held accountable by the, the school site. So that is a standard that is in place, uh, but I do have to be very transparent about the scrutiny that this one particular vendor is receiving uh, from the board. Uh, I do support um, this vendor. I've talked to some board members offline about it. And I do want that to be on the record. Thank you.
Trustee Reckler.
Does this contract have annual measurable outcomes that can be looked back on at the completion of the contract and measured uh, appropriately and objectively?
Yes, ma'am. We've assured that for every single contract that's coming before the board.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any? Trustee Smith Fall.
Thank you. When we're looking at uh, contracts that are approved by the school site council, that's, they go to the school site council, correct? And the school site council can kind of pick through the menu that we talked about before and we've kind of always talked about. So they pick this, the school site council picks the menu and then they make sure they have the funding and then it comes back for board approval. So this was approved by the school site council at Grant Elementary. Is that accurate?
Yes, that is accurate.
Thank you. All I have left is a comment, President Christian.
Okay. So, we need a motion?
Uh, I'll go ahead and move. Item E seven, Mindful Life Project for approval.
Smith Fall, second.
All right, it's been moved, it's been second. And comments?
President Christian, I have a comment.
Okay, uh, we go trustee Smith Fall and then we go trustee Phillips.
Dr. Hurst, one of the things that I, one of the things that I heard uh, staff say is that they kind of course corrected, right? So they looked at, back at the old 2019 tapes and realized, oh, some of the stuff that that board required, we are actually doing now in our vetting process, right? One of the things that I would like to add to that vetting process is a- asking vendors specific questions about anti-bias, anti-racism, equity. Like what does their particular organization or programming do in that realm? Because we're trying to align our district to be anti-racist, uh, anti-bias and equitable, right? So I think that when we're bringing people in, we need to make sure that that's the, we're looking at that lens also so we can have um, we can have some assurances of the vendors that we put on that menu. I'm complete.
All right. Trustee Phillips.
So on tonight, I will be voting no for this contract. And I will be doing it for a couple of reasons. One, the board directed staff to come up with a standard for mindfulness in this district before any contract like this comes back. That was not done. The second thing is the meetings when this particular vendor was discussed, there were multiple meetings. And there were multiple sessions of public comment. And in those sessions of public comment, they were accused of mistreating, discriminating against black employees, particularly black men and women. And there were multiple complaints of them discriminating against black employees and women. And for the three reasons that I just gave, the allegations of discrimination and the fact that the work to develop a standard for mindfulness in this district has not yet been done, I will not be voting yes. I just wanted to make sure that I expressed publicly my opinions because I know sometimes uh, if I don't, it's left to speculation and people will fill in the dots for me. So I decided to fill in the dots for myself. Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
President Christian, I have another comment if no one else does.
All right. Go ahead, trustee Smith Fall.
Um, Dr. Harrison, forgive me, it's not really a comment, it's a question, but we've done that tonight, so I want to ask a question. Did your staff look into any allegations of discrimination? And if so, what did you find?
We did look into those allegations and they are unfounded. And as I shared uh, before, um, again, just being very transparent uh, with the board and uh, the public that no other entity has received this scrutiny, the staff has come and given a, a recommendation. We do support them. Their, the allegations that were shared were unfounded. They've been through the strategic vetting process. They passed that process. The AMOs will be monitored as with every other consultant, uh, so they do have my support again.
Thank you for that clarification.
Are there any other comments? All right. If not, you go to the vote. Trustee Miles.
Miles abstain.
All right. Trustee Suppona.
Suppona, yeah.
All right. Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes. Reckler, yes.
Trustee Smith Fall.
Smith Falls, yes.
Uh, trustee Phillips.
No.
All right, and I abstain. Motion bill and you need a three votes.
We don't need to revoke.
No, I say you need a three vote.
Right.
Uh, F one. F one. Federal program monitoring.
To Dr. McIntyre for F one, please.
Thank you, board. It's an honor to be back before you this evening. This has uh, been an item a long time in the making. Uh, both in, i- i- in, in that it's presented uh, some opportunities for the organization, but it's also uh, we're going to be having some very candid conversations around some areas that we, we struggled with uh, in the prior, prior year and a half and steps we've taken to try to address that. If, so we're, tonight we're talking about the federal program monitoring. Uh, we're going to talk about our findings and some of the steps we've taken since and what steps are outstanding from federal program monitoring. Next slide, please. Thank you. So obviously, one of the first questions for those who are not in the know and don't live and breathe this everyday school finance, uh, we, we should probably talk for a quick second about what is federal program monitoring. Uh, a- as a, as a government entity who receives federal funds, we are required to be monitored by the state to ensure that we're spending federal funds according to the allowable uses for which they are prescribed. And so really, the purpose of FPM or federal program monitoring is for the state to ensure that we spend the funds and implement the programs as required in law for receipt of those funds. Next slide, please. So, uh, the next natural question would be is, is how often does this happen or how are we chosen? Uh, l- school districts are chosen, we say LEAs, local educational agencies, because charter schools as well as county offices of vet are also audited by federal program monitoring auditors. Uh, they're selected based on the size of the programs, the size of the federal wards, uh, and the, and a risk analysis that includes the district, district's history of compliance around federal program monitoring. Uh, this district has been selected pretty much biannually, meaning every two years quite regularly for the last ten years. Um, because of FPM, or I'm sorry, because of COVID, the FPM reviews can be conducted onsite or remotely. And, and the most recent uh, review was done online and remotely, meaning we would upload document, to fill document requests and demonstrate what we've done electronically and then have those meetings electronically. Next slide, please. So, the, the next thing we need to acknowledge is the programs that are involved are looked at by the federal program monitor auditors. And so here we provide a list of the ten areas they looked at. So for exact, for example, the adjusted cohort graduation rate. So how, the frequency with which our students are, are graduating in four years. They looked at the adult education program. They looked at the career technical education program as well as what's called compensatory education. Uh, and, and you can see what the monitoring focus is of the auditors for each one of those areas there. Next slide, please. The, the auditors are also looking at educational equity. So how do our programs and policies address discrimination, harassment, intimidation, and bullying? They're looking at how we're, uh, how we're handling our English learner program, not only funding, but the programs themselves. They're looking at our federal stimulus monitoring. So those are a lot, all those COVID funds we've received over the last several years. They're looking at our fiscal monitoring. Are we tracking our expenditures? Are we using the right procurement procedures and policies for different types of purchases? And where we've got people funded using federal funds, are we tracking their time according to federal law? So time accounting. They're also looking at the school support and improvement. Uh, so these are school, uh, schools that are, you know, kind of on the lower end of the performing schools and then uh, supporting effective instruction. So these are the ten areas that the federal program monitors looked at and the, the, the broad areas within each of those in the description under the monitoring focus. Next slide, please. So part of what CDE does is they put together a team of reviewers. They're not technically called auditors, they're called reviewers. And there is a, an, a reviewer in each of the ten assigned areas that we talked about and they are experts in their assigned programs. So where they looked at, for example, um, career technical education, there was a career technical education expert assigned to that area. So it's not a broad auditor like we see in financial auditing. These are programmatic experts uh, with experience in these areas. Um, we assigned district program leads at the staff level to help support the, the uh, upload and identification of document and production of document requests in each level. Um, and, and we uploaded as we could produce the information available to us. Administrators at the school sites uh, in which those school sites receive federal funds were also involved in this process and they were, they were actually quite responsive uh, and, and very helpful to central office staff in providing document requests. Additionally, the central office departments, including human resources, business services, ed services, IT, all contributed to gathering information and submitting to support our claims or substantiate our practices. Next slide, please. So there is a process to go through for FPM that have steps. And so one of the things we do is we, the, the FPM, uh, CDE provides training for districts or LEAs going through FPM uh, or that are going to go through FPM shortly. And so we did actually attend those trainings. Uh, the, the lead in our district that attended those trainings was actually uh, Lynn Potter from the categoricals department. And, and she was the primary point of, point of contact for coordinating the collection and upload of all of this information, her and her team. And I, I don't want to say uh, it's, it's been a labor of love and pain for her and you'll see why as we talk through different elements of this. They are, the, the state also provides a program review tool and technical assistance. So as we get to the gathering of our information and putting our materials together, that we have an understanding of what they're looking for, how they're looking for it and what they really need to substantiate different program objectives. Uh, so that way, it's, it's not too much of a, it's not any more of a back and forth than it's required to be. They also provide us a, a, a document production list. So they give us a list of what they're looking for from the school sites and from central office. Uh, and then we, they show us how we're going to upload all of that because they have a special system for reviewing these materials. Next slide, please. In the second step, it's called the actual visit. For, for our financial audit, they come onsite and they actually start digging through our documents. Here we upload those documents uh, for their review. Now during this particular period, uh, there's no longer technical assistance during the actual visit. So once we start uploading, we move into the true audit phase of the process. And so, you know, they're, 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 the, the, the reviewers are looking for anything that's missing. For example, like signatures, fiscal coding, uh, where we have an updated policies or procedures. And they're identifying those in what's called our notice. uh where we have an updated policies or procedures, and they're identifying those in what's called our notice of findings. And the this entire process and procedure, including our notice of findings and steps we've taken since this happened, have been posted on the district's website for several months now. We posted the actual F federal program monitoring report immediately after it was made available to us. It's just taken us this long to get to it here in the here in the boardroom. Next slide, please. So the initial results of the twenty one twenty two FPM audit, the twenty one twenty two FPM audit included expenditures for twenty one twenty two and twenty twenty one. Uh and and so when we look at those, the number of findings in the different areas, we we see that we had three findings in adult education, nine findings around federal stimulus, six findings around compensatory education. And you can see that the grid that shows where we had the findings in general. Now, some of these findings were financial in nature and some were policy in nature or where we hadn't updated a procedure. Uh and and the report spells that out uh with with uh just an incredible level of detail that allows us to take the steps necessary to address each one of these. And once we received the notice of findings, then it was our job as quickly as possible to work toward clearing all of these findings. Next slide, please. So it once we get our our federal program monitoring report, we have to immediately move into action to identify the areas of concern. We have to coordinate with all the departments to resolve the issues. And we have to coordinate with with CDE and get technical assistance because sometimes we get a finding and we don't, it's not necessarily clear uh what we did to manifest the finding or what we omitted that caused the finding to be highlighted. And and so at the point, what once the the reviewers issue their report, they suddenly become available to us again for technical assistance and we leverage that. Uh we we are required to submit uh where we can't clear items, we're required to submit reimbursements where there are financial claims. Uh the initial window open to resolve issues is forty five days. Uh but we can and did and have asked for and been granted several extensions to continue uh clearing items as we're able to produce documents as quickly as possible. However, it is important to recognize that the CD is not obligated to approve extension requests. In fact, our final extension uh goes through October twenty second, just this later this week. Next slide, please. So here we show a chart that shows the the findings that the the number of findings we had that we've cleared and those that are remaining. Uh we see within the adult ed, we managed to clear all those findings back in April. There are still a couple of federal stimulus findings that are remaining uh that we're attempting to clear. Uh these are around purchasing practices, not that we did anything illegal or nefarious. It was that uh when we had purchases uh between ten thousand dollars and the bid limit threshold, we are required to get uh competitive quotes. We don't go out to bid, but we get competitive quotes and those quotes were obtained, but nobody bothered to save and upload copies of those quotes, so they couldn't be produced to show that we got three competitive prices before we committed to a purchase. And so that's what you're seeing in those last two uh federal stimulus uh remaining findings. CTE still has a finding open and we've got an ex- an extension on that one. The educational equity remains open uh and and that's they're not cleared, not because we haven't been responsive, but because we've uploaded all the materials and we have not heard back the final judgment from the reviewer on what we've uploaded, but we have responded to all ten open claims there. Uh on the English language learners, uh once again, we've uploaded all the documentation, but we don't have all the final clearances. Same with supporting effective instruction. So all of the remaining findings have been responded to and we're just we're just waiting to hear back. Uh it's next slide, please. So some of the findings uh were non-financial in nature, for example, adult education, you see there across top, but some of the findings were specifically around federal stimulus. We see the around procurement, the way we purchased. Uh there there were some purchases made with uh federal stimulus dollars, specifically the COVID uh funds. Uh whereby we we use, we follow state guidelines, but not federal guidelines when we made the purchase. And then when we transferred that purchase into a federal funding stream, uh it it was it was deemed inappropriate. Uh the initial potential liability was roughly uh nearly nine million dollars for that. Uh the district had managed to clear seven point two million. We've since paid back three point five million dollars last year and the current outstanding liability for this area is one just over a million dollars, a million sixty five thousand dollars. On the compensatory education, this is the time and effort. This is where we had people being funded into the COVID funds, but we weren't they were split funded or they were wholly funded. We weren't collecting those federal time certifications either biannually for people who are fully funded by federal funds or monthly for those who are split funded, meaning they're charged partially to state funds and partially into a COVID fund into a federal funding stream. Um and and as you can see, we the initial finding actually went up or the the final reimbursement went up from the original finding uh to the amount that we reimbursed and that was paid back last year. And so when I when we talk about paid back, this is actually a really important distinction where you see reimbursed to date on this column. We didn't have to write a check to the federal government to the state. What we had to do was take unrestricted general fund dollars and pay back the federal program. So we're still obligated and responsible for legally spending all of the remaining federal dollars, including those that have been reimbursed from the unrestricted general fund. Um we didn't lose them, but we certainly have made the changes necessary to make sure moving forward that we don't repeat uh the issues that created this liability. Next slide, please. Here we see that we had some expenditures, uh for example, in the for English language learners uh around allowable ability and we managed to uh to clear all of those without any penalty. Uh again, we had expenditures for English language learners where we had time and effort so that accounting for people's time that was not done correctly and we paid that back last year. Uh we had some some findings, some findings for fiscal monitoring around procurement. You see, we in this category, we cleared all those without having to repay anything. Uh but we also had finding fiscal findings around time and effort in this category that had to be reimbursed. Uh similarly with supporting effective instruction, uh you see the amount that had to be reimbursed was considerably, you know, roughly what is that, three percent of the original uh problem or finding that was created? So we managed to clear most of it, but we we did have to reimburse nearly fourteen thousand dollars in that category. And then finally, supporting uh school support and improvement, uh we did have to uh reimburse seven hundred and one thousand around time and effort accounting again. So the time and effort accounting, every one of these uh items where you see we've had a finding, we've had to not only create a procedure but implement a procedure and show that to the reviewers to demonstrate that we're not going to repeat the problem again. Next slide, please. So moving forward, one of there, there's a couple of things that have really just jumped out at us. One, we we definitely need to work on our ecosystem internally around compliance. Um pulling this information together, uh I would love to say it was a labor of love, but it was probably one of the most probably the worst experiences the compliance department has had to deal with. Uh the breakdown even within my own department business to to get stuff pulled and get it uploaded and to meet all the requirements was horrendous and I know other departments struggled mightily. Um but the, you know, the oversight fell back to the compliance department and they and despite just constant challenges, they really did an admirable admirable and laudable job uh that should be uh rewarded. Um and and I certainly appreciate their efforts. Um we also have worked hard to build and maintain better internal records and infrastructures. As a district, we had four findings in a row around time and attendance accounting that were never remediated. We now have a proper time and attendance accounting system that meets federal guidelines. Our purchasing and procurement uh procedures have been updated and we are meeting federal guidelines. These are things that could have been, could have been and should have been updated over time. We fell short in the past, but we have fixed them now moving forward. We are also going to work to make sure that those who are involved in FPM in this iteration are involved a little earlier in the pre FPM training. Uh this next time, you know, we've been in, we were all in crisis mode coming out of, you know, coming back to school after COVID and that's right about the time this monitoring happened. That's not an excuse, but we were we were asking people to make a very heavy lift while they were also had the weight of the world on their shoulders. And so we're gonna try to make sure that we provide more meaningful and engaging training for the next time around, because I'm sure we'll be doing this in two years. Um and then we're also want to make sure that our internal controls stay strong. And so part of what we're working on is how we're communicating and how we're self evaluating our compliance rather than waiting for an external evaluator uh to come and tell us how we're doing. And so several of those steps and practices are already in place. Uh and I'm available for questions as appropriate. Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions? Trustee Recklin.
Thank you for the presentation. I I'll just jump right to the chase. So I appreciate that there's been a lot of work done to get everybody better practices, procedures. Oh, I'm sorry. I I appreciate all the work that's been done to improve practices, procedures, trainings. Can you talk about the sustainability of what you've done beyond the, you know, like how are you, how have you codified this so that it will be better forever?
That that's a great question because systems are truly only as good as the people who have to implement them on a daily basis. Uh so for example, one of our biggest findings was around time and attendance accounting. It's a finding we had four FPMs in a row. It's a finding we should never have again. Uh so you know, one of the things that the team did is is they worked very closely with the FPM reviewers to identify what they've seen as best in class practices statewide. We we resurrected old policies and procedures and updated them with those practices. Our team put together, our team being the compliance team, put together training videos that they that they uh reviewed with with school site leaders, department leaders and made available to the people who are the frontline workers doing this actual work. So teachers and classified workers who do this work and would be coded into these programs. Now that the 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 system is in place, what happens is we have a list of everybody who's federally funded. And every single month, we're checking off, did we get their completed time certifications? So there's a feedback loop in the system to make sure that we don't fall short, we don't miss somebody's card. Uh whether it be monthly or semi-annual, depending on the type, the way they're funded. Uh so so we don't find out later, oh no, we've got this big hole. So so the system itself has a feedback process in the loop that that is self validating. So that's how we've tried to construct construct systems so they're self validating. And if there is an issue, there's a mechanism that immediately raises a red flag to escalate issues to to senior management where necessary.
Okay, thank you. Then from the board's perspective, board policy, board practice, board procedure, which should the board be doing? Do we have, does the board have everything that they needs? That they need to monitor this or does the board need something else to monitor FPM? And ensure that you all are getting better.
Well, I I I know that all the board members have actually read the report and and it's 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 a pretty harrowing report to read. You know, we 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 got kicked punched in the gut because we deserve to get punched in the gut. Uh to be completely frank, uh so familiarity with with you know, where we were from a compliance perspective uh is is a good place to start. Um we have a couple of open items that we're trying to clear and as you saw, we had uploaded several items and haven't heard back from the reviewers. Now, our our final extension ends this next week, so we're gonna hear back one way or another from the reviewers. I'm happy to bring the the list of of what the reviewers clear and what they don't and what our plan is to clear the last open items, uh if they're not all cleared by the final review. Um until they are, because frankly, we have to clear every one of these. It's not an option. Our failure to adequately put systems in place to 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 follow the rules around federal funding could not this year, but if we didn't make massive strides forward, could put our federal funding in jeopardy and we don't ever want to find ourselves in that position. So from a governance perspective, I think it would be smart to demand that staff come back and demonstrate that we have cleared everything. At a minimum. And I would be happy to commit to bringing that report back.
All right.
Uh, okay, I let me just write something down so I remember it for comments. Okay.
Okay.
Final question is, what was the what was the original dollar amount and what do you expect to settle at on the FPMs?
The original findings, if you read the uh the the FPM reporter, north of thirty eight million dollars. Um the final payback i- is is just shy, I believe, of seven, right around seven million dollars. So we've cleared most of the financial findings. Um it but we couldn't clear them all because there were some places where we spent the money on the intended purpose, but we just couldn't provide the backup document saying we checked all the boxes. So I I do want to be clear, no money's missing. Nobody spent something necessarily in the wrong place. This has more to do with, did we provide the right documentation to substantiate it?
Okay, thank you. I I do have some comments when everybody's done with questions. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
President Christian, I have a question.
All right, trustee Smith Fall.
Doctor McIntyre or Doctor Hurst, when did the FPM first hit the district's hands? Just month. What month did it first hit your hands?
I I I'm looking, if you'd like to ask your next question, I'll I'll try to look while you're while we're answering that, if that's okay.
And then you talked about, yes, that's fine. You talked about um what the total remaining money that we have to pay back? And then I would like to know, I I was trying to look on your slide presentation, what's the total amount of findings that are outstanding? And are they from a particular area more than another one? Is that question clear?
Y- yes, ma'am, it is. Right now, I'm pulling the federal program monitoring report uh right now from the web site. Or I'm not.
And just to be real clear, I want to know when the district got it, right? Not when it was uploaded or not when it was presented to us, but when the district got the federal program monitoring information.
To be completely candid, I'm struggling to find it on the website. I don't know if any any of the team members are trying to search and help me on this one, but um I know that we received instruction from the superintendent to upload it within a week of when we received the report. Uh and I know that I believe it was the same time we sent it to board members saying, hey, we got this report. Uh we're gonna upload it, but we need to talk about it. Um so but it was earlier this year, like considerably earlier this year. It's it's been quite a long time, actually.
Okay. And then Doctor Hurst, or I'm sorry, uh Doctor McIntyre, again, I'm looking for just if you could look through your slides for the the total amount of the outstanding findings, that that would be the million, right? And is it combined from all of the categories that are still left out? Or is it from one area?
So the i- in the report here, they're they're segregated out by by section, but the way they're listed in the report, it it's very difficult to tell if they're if they're compounding or if they're separate. So the way it's written in the port, it looks like there's about thirty million. Uh but when you look in my PowerPoint presentation by segment on slides twelve and thirteen, we see the original liability, for example, for procurement around federal federal stimulus was eight point six. Uh there was another fifteen thousand in time and effort, comp ed had another five hundred sixty four thousand. English language learners, we had roughly half a million between allowable ability and time and effort. Fiscal monitoring, we had roughly six hundred thousand dollars between procurement and time and effort. Uh supporting effective instruction, we had roughly three hundred ninety seven thousand supporting uh school support and improvement. We had seven hundred and one thousand. So uh I don't have a calculator on me, but those were the the high level findings that we then had to work to clear. The amount that we ended up uh having to pay back was was substantially less.
Thank you for that. And if I was looking on our district's website, where would I find, would I type in FPM in a search bar? What where would I find it, Doctor Hurst or Doctor McIntyre?
Uh I am looking for that myself because I I did validate that it was put up there originally, but when I type FPM, what I'm what I'm seeing is some older stuff. Uh uh so I I would be happy to I I guess, report back and ensure that it's moved to the our front webpage first thing in the morning, so that way anybody who wants to follow up on this can can do so. Oh, I'm sorry, our our director of communications, Liz Sanders, says she has an answer.
Thank you. Um, and trustee Smith folds, you have, um, noticed one of the issues that is one of the core issues we're working to address on our website. And it has to do with the search feature. Um, so when you do try to use the search feature, the way that it's currently working, it frequently pulls up old information. Um, so I will look on our website and I will ensure that we can tell you exactly how to navigate to the report itself. Also work with Dr. McIntyre to make sure that it's posted in an area that's clearly visible and accessible. When you visit the website, um, and we are aware of this ongoing search issue that affects this particular report. And many other things currently we're working with our content management system to find a, to find a remedy.
Thank you so much for that. Dr. Harrison or, uh, Dr. Harrison, President Christian, everything else is comments. Thank you.
Are there any, uh, other question? If not, then we go.
Ms. Cleveland has her hand up, President Christian.
Okay.
Yes, I wanted to speak on this item because, uh, these are really significant findings, um, from a monetary standpoint. And so I just wanted to, I know there's been a lot of progress made in terms of putting systems in place going forward. But, um, these steps that Dr. Ma- McIntyre has highlighted are actually very critical to fiscal recovery. And so what we don't want to do is take, you know, make progress in fiscal recovery and then take steps back through the non-compliance. And so these federal program, even though we're not actually cutting a check and paying it back to the state, it's impacting our unrestricted general fund where we have the most pressure right now. So anytime we have to move, you know, monies and pay back the federal programs, we're losing money from our unrestricted pot. And so I want to say that the district can't afford to repeat this. And, and any staff that's listening to this, that is in any departments, not just the business office. Everyone has to work on this fiscal recovery together. And so the importance of completion of time reporting, taking the training, understanding what's compliant is really, really critical across all departments. And anyone that is actually being charged to the federal programs, um, implementing programs under these federal programs. Is this just really critical? Right now, these findings are like one time in nature. But if there's continued non-compliance, then they become ongoing. So I always wanted, uh, Dr. McIntyre's, uh, put in some new processes and procedures and really step this up. And so I just want to encourage everybody to get on the same team and make sure that this doesn't become an issue um, in the future and impact our fiscal solvency plan. Thank you.
Any comments? Trustee Rector.
I do have comments. The first one is that Ms. Cleveland just said everything that I was going to say. So thank you. I will not repeat it. I'll just do it. And thank you very much. The other comment that I think is really important is that I'm going to feel like I'm scolding and that's not really my intent to do, but I would just really appreciate knowing that there were FPM findings and I encourage Dr. Hurst and the team to be more transparent with the board about this because I had to actually find out about it through back channels and then just ask and be like, so did we get like FPM findings and were they like horrible? Because nobody had come forward first. So I want to encourage that the team comes forward and says, hey, we got this. We're working on it. We can update you on next day. It's just not something that I as a board member want to find out. Um, you know, it just transparency and upfrontness is, uh, certainly much better. So I just wanted to make that comment. The next thing is, is because this is so serious, I think that there should be a report out four times a year on, until this is solved. So it goes in the Friday memo, a little FPM box. And this is what we had to do. This is what we completed. Um, or something I'm willing to work on what that looks like, but I think that because it was so serious that there does need to be some tracking on where you are in recovery. And, um, I think that is it for me right now. Thank you.
All right. Tracy Phillips.
Thank you. This item to me is very similar to the Williams reports. In the sense that it discusses what we have done uh, and how it impacts children. Um, and in some cases adults, because I see adult education is in there. Um, but it is extremely important. And you know, when we do Williams reports, you guys put them on and sit and I pull it off, right? I pull them off even when there's nothing to report, when there are no findings, because I think it's that important for the public to know. What's happening? And there's no difference with this. Um, I, I think updates in the Friday memo is fine, but I actually think for the same reason I pulled the Williams reports, that those updates need to happen in this space for the entire public to hear. People have been complaining in this district for years about the level of services. Sometimes the complaints are not valid. A lot of times they are. If we're being honest. Right? And this is being honest. Right? But as long as we do things and we don't, um, do it in an upfront way, and I get it, you know, agendas are jammed. You guys got 50 million things coming at you. When I say you guys, I'm talking about staff. Um, but please look at this the same way that I've been trying to get you guys to look at the Williams reports. Good, bad, or indifferent in the middle. This needs to be put out for the public on a regular basis. So they know where we are. Um, and so people know they're not crazy either, right? This is the experience that I've been having and I've been telling somebody, this is my experience. But nobody believes me. Nobody's hearing me. Oh, wait a minute. The federal government is actually saying what I've been complaining about. Or the county is actually saying what I've been complaining about. Part of, of, of moving forward is, is, is acknowledging. Um, and I know that's happening in this space right now, but it has to happen, in my opinion, more frequently, um, in this space. So thank you for the opportunity to, to share my thoughts on this.
All right. Any other comments? Tracy Smith.
Thank you, President Christian. Um, I want to make sure, Dr. Hurst, that we are, we see the red flags when they're being kind of waved in our face and we see some of these red flags. This report is full of them, right? And for me, one of the ones that stick out the most is educational equity. And you and I have talked about that and our English language learners, but all of them. Ev- everywhere we were deemed is a red flag that we need to stop, readjust and recalibrate. And I think that's what Dr. McIntyre and your staff are doing. And I appreciate that. It's just, I think we as a board should be kept more abreast about what's happening and more like having, um, very frequent updates about this because what Ms. Cleveland said is exactly accurate. You can't take three steps forward and 10 steps back, right? And this is, it, it's, it's a public institution, right? So it's, it's, it's money that goes to kids and is supposed to go to children's services and the things that make them the best version of themselves. And if we are not doing it the way that the federal government said and the way that we have committed to, then we are doing a disservice as a board and as a district, and that needs to stop immediately. Um, I also want to call attention to page six. Uh, Dr. McIntyre, when you do your, your slides, it still looks like the alphabet soup, right? So just at the very bottom, like page, page six or slide six had CDE, LEA, CTE and CSI, right? So just at the very bottom, if we could kind of make space to put what they are or have a, a glossary or appendix somewhere on the slideshow, I think it would help keep everybody on the same page and, um, at the same pace of the conversation. And that goes for kind of every presentation. I just happened to see it in this one more so than not. Um, Dr. Hurst, thank you and your staff for everything you do. As soon as y'all get something, we should get something, right? As soon as y'all get it, the public needs to have it because this is a public document and everybody needs to hold everybody accountable to it. It's just good checks and balances. Thank you. I'm complete.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? No. F2.
Yes, we're going to turn this over to Mr. Booker and also Dr. Greenwood.
Just waiting for the slide presentation.
Thank you for your patience, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, esteemed board, Dr. Hurst, for allowing me to present an update with regard to safety. And the safety covers COVID safety, physical safety and social emotional safety. This evening's presentation will be done by, uh, LaShante Smith and I. Next slide. So I'm going to talk about the COVID testing options that we still have available. Uh, we still do, uh, group tracing testing, uh, the group tracing model at all school sites. Uh, we also provide screening testing for students, staff and immediate family uh, members at the district office, Monday through Friday from eight to four. Uh, there is also available for Kaiser members, uh, at home test kits that are free of charge at kp.org's website. We also provide at home test kits at all of our sites, uh, if needed. And those are requested, um, like I said, if needed. Um, there continue to do administered testing at, at, at CVS. If you click on the, uh, website, uh, there are seven questions that you have to answer. And then, uh, once you answer those, you submit it and it goes to the site that has available testing, uh, through CVS. There's also the county testing location, which is at 25th and Nevin. Uh, that is, um, Monday, uh, through Friday from eight to 3:30 PM. Uh, they would prefer that you either call or schedule an appointment online. And there's also the state testing location, which is at, uh, Contra Costa College. And that is Sunday through Thursday, 7 AM to 3 PM. Um, and that is also scheduled online or you can call for an appointment. Next slide, please. So I want to explain the group tracing, uh, process. Uh, although we do, we no longer do weekly testing, uh, at our sites, we still do our group tracing and group tracing is for those folks that have been exposed to a positive case that is on site. Uh, so they are required, although they can remain on site, uh, they are required to test within a three to five day period. That testing is still done by LSA. Um, and they come to the site on the, uh, date that is given to the site leaders. Um, and they test the exposed group. If someone from that group is tested positive, they are sent home for isolation. We strongly recommend during the exposure, uh, date that, uh, masking is still strongly recommended. Next slide, please. And I also want to mention, we are still following the county and CDPH's, uh, guidance with regard to COVID. As far as physical safety is concerned, these are areas that we have really focused on, on our slides. And I want to talk about the physical part of it first. And that's limiting our points of access or having one, uh, point of access for our campuses. Really focusing in on our lanyard and ID or procedures. And having our, uh, an appropriate ID badge policy, uh, for our campuses. We also continue to enforce our closed campus policy, which is a board approved policy. We also have enhanced our visit, visitor sign-in procedures, uh, for our sites. We have started, or we have, since the beginning of school, we have done facility assessments. Those assessments are, once completed, uh, we will review them with, uh, Mr. Louis Freeze and look at the priorities for those sites if they are structural in nature. We also continue to do event planning. Uh, we have operation plans for those. And then we also look at uh, the strategy that we're current, currently using, which is our see something, say something. And this is for anyone that is onsite at one of our school sites. And it's, uh, they can either talk to a site administrator, a trusted adult, or they can call our 800 number, 762-7463 to report anonymously, something happening on the campus. I want to acknowledge, um, the director of operations, Julio Franco, who has done a really good job of managing and directing the campus safety specialist. Uh, we have enhanced their visibility and coverage at each one of our sites. Uh, and I want to acknowledge them as well. Uh, they have accepted not only the changes that we've made, but they have done, uh, in terms of our training, really been into the training that we have given them. Um, we have also put, uh, supervision at each one of our sites. Uh, and Julio Franco, uh, meets with them on a weekly basis to go over what's going on at each site. We have asked each one of our sites to have their community-based organizations, as well as their teachers, visible during, uh, passing periods or times where, um, there's a lot of traffic on the site. And then we looked at improving our CSS student communications. Uh, we have really worked well in terms of, uh, getting our CSS to better understand our students on site. And then we really focus on reducing our foot traffic during school instruction hours. And then finally, which is a CD requirement, uh, we have updated or in the process of updating our comprehensive site, uh, safety plans. Next slide, please. So one of our compliance tools is our safety walk, uh, monitoring checklist. Uh, it's a Google document that collects the data for physical safety compliance at each site. These, uh, sites are, safety walks are done by our executive directors, uh, our directors, our coordinators, our supervisors. At the secondary site, they are done, uh, once per week. Uh, and that's on a rotating schedule. As far, as far as the elementary schools go, we do them quarterly. And that is done within a two week period. Next slide, please. Like I said, the comprehensive site safety plans are a requirement by the CDE, the California Department of Education. Uh, and they are required, we are required to do them every year, update them every year. Uh, the principals have been given this information. Uh, they have a due date that they need to adhere to. Uh, and then once, uh, those plans are complete, they have to be reviewed by our SSEs, uh, and our classified and certificated staff. All staff that are in those plans should understand their roles. And they should also, uh, seek input from our stakeholders. Um, and then once those plans are complete, they should make a hard copy. Those plans are then submitted to the district safety team. And from there, those plans, once they are reviewed, are submitted to the school board for final adoption. These are living documents, so we periodically review them and revise if needed. Next slide, please. So we really, uh, focused on making sure that our drills, which is a CD requirement also, um, and our training. Uh, so we have an automated system that, um, tracks our drills and our training for each site. Um, as we have given the site leaders a, a plan, um, how to do those drills and when to do those drills. Um, and we also have given them a training calendar for active shooter, safety prisons, uh, safety procedures, et cetera. In those, the drills and training, the staff should understand their roles. And the students should have a clear direction for the drill. Next slide, please. LaShante Smith is going to talk about social emotional safety.
Uh, President Christian, before Ms. Smith goes, may I ask a question? Are we dividing, thank you. Are we dividing this, uh, presentation into two parts or are we doing it all as one?
We can divide it into two parts.
So may we ask questions now of the first part of the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. I do have a question, but I don't know what order you're going in, President Christian. I do have a question, but I don't know what order you're going in, President Christian.
Okay. So, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Mr. Booker, I have a couple of questions. One is, do we train our, for example, our gardeners, our yard duty, our community organizers that are there during the day? Do we give them a small little training when they're there? Or our volunteers, when they're there and say, hey, if there's a fire, this is what you have to do. If there's a active shooter, this is what we do. This is what, a lockdown is. Do we have any way, because we have people coming back into the schools, right? So we have our, at one elementary school, we have a community gardener that comes in, right? And then we have yard supervisors that come in, and we have community organizations that may be there during the day. What do we do in those cases? Have they been trained on what our emergency policies are?
So we do two things. We, we actually train each site. And then, we train each section or department, once they request the training. So not only are we training everybody that is on the site, we also train those staffs that are either subs or attinerant staff that may not be on the staff on a continual basis through their department.
Okay, thank you for that. And then, Mr. Booker, can you speak to the reason why we want to have a a variety of CSSs, right? We want to make sure we have females. We want to make sure we have bilingual. We want to make sure we have all of our CSSs are trauma-trained CSSs. We want to make, can you tell us why that's necessary? And what it adds to the safety of our campuses?
Well, we want diversity, whether it's, you know, by race, by gender. We want to make sure that each site has the appropriate staff for any given situation. So if a staff needs a female or a Spanish speaker, we want to make sure that we try to make that happen. But we want diversity throughout our district in terms of the CSS program.
Thank you. And then with your group tracing, with the group tracing, once they come to the site, right? Once LSA, and I hope I'm getting their acronym right, once LSA comes to the site, can only that group test, or can parents hear that, okay, my older kid is inside that group? So can they have their younger kid test too at that? Or is it just for that particular group that was exposed? Is my question clear?
Yes, it is clear. And it's a good question. Unfortunately, the group tracing is just for the group that was exposed. The other resources that I mentioned earlier are avenues where people can test. But we no longer do weekly testing on the site. So the group tracing is by basically the date that is given from our nurse for when that LSA is going to be on site. So it's only for the, the group that is exposed to that positive case.
Thank you. And my last question is, do we still do the QR code, or no? You know, the little QR code that we had, that we had to, had to sign in with our phone, and then, do we still do that, or are those no longer?
No, we, we currently don't do that. There were some, some issues with Facilitron. So we have enhanced our, our visitors' protocol in terms of, we are looking at some other platforms to use for our sites. But right now, our procedure is, is that you sign in at the front office, get an ID, and then go to the appropriate place being supervised.
Thank you. President Christian, all I have left are comments.
All right. Tracy Phillips.
A few months ago, the board directed the superintendent to come back to the board, and I don't remember the exact words, but basically to develop a policy that will allow our students and staff to be safe on campus and to have healthy relationships with law enforcement there. And I'm paraphrasing because I don't remember the exact words. Where are we on that?
So we have been meeting, we, myself and Mr. Booker have been meeting with every, some mayors, but also some city managers, but all of the chiefs. So what we're doing is we are getting them to write down in writing, what does that relationship look like between WCCUSD and that city or that agency? So right now, we're gathering all of that information in writing. And then we'll use that information to engage in a conversation with the community and then use that to bring back to the board.
You have, and again, I know you have fifty million things to do. But do you have a projected timeline where this work should be done, or at least brought back to the board?
So, and I'm looking at Mr. Booker, one, I just want to ask, where are we right now with just meeting with all the, the chiefs? I think we met with all the chiefs, but just giving it all in writing right now.
Yes, we have met with all the chiefs. And we have just about everyone's information. The only chief I believe we don't have information from is, is Hercules PD. But they are in the process of putting in place a new chief. So, once we get that information, we will put it together, review it, put it together, and then present it.
I know that there have been some, I know that there have been some issues. But thus far, does it seem like the discussions are positive?
So I would say, and Mr. Booker, you could chime in too, so I would say that all of the conversations have been positive. That they all seem to want a positive relationship with WCCUSD. That doesn't necessarily mean SRO, and they specifically have said that. But especially Richmond Police Department's police chief, I think they're in a different situation, especially with staffing, they said. But they certainly have expressed a, a positive interest in having a positive relationship with WCCUSD.
Yeah, and I just want to echo that, that every chief that we met with, they have continually talked about having a positive relationship. And that's why we're getting it in writing. What does that look like to them? And then, seeing how it fits into what we're trying to do. But they have also talked about not necessarily having an SRO program, but having a relationship, a positive relationship.
Okay. And I think our, our, our next steps is that it probably will look different, you know, in the communities, and what that looks like, depending upon what resources they have available, like Richmond for one. But I think our plan is, once we have that in writing, is to start then developing the plan and the strategy to really engage the community, and then coming back to the board.
Thank you. Other question? Any other comments? Any other comments?
And I think she has to.
Tracy Rettler?
Okay.
Tracy Smith Paul?
Thank you. Thank you, President Christian. I do have a comment. May I go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead. And there we go, Tracy Phillips.
Thank you so much. Dr. Hurst, I appreciate that safety and staffing is coming back to every board meeting. I think that that's really, really important. I really do want to make sure that we firm up that everybody that walks on campus understands what to do in an emergency, right? And who to go to and how to behave, because it can be daunting when it happens, right? When it first happens, we can be kind of keen and trained to the heels and back. But when that emergency happens, we all fall into normative patterns of behavior, right? So I want us to make sure that we're doing that adult training and the adult wraparound services that come after such a training, because it is a little traumatic. I know for us at one of the elementary schools, we have parents that volunteer to do traffic, right? What happens if there's an earthquake? When we're out there at seven thirty in the morning to do traffic, and we haven't been trained on what to do with the kids and what to do with ourselves. So that's what I really want to kind of press on in this, in this presentation. I also want to have us look at how we can talk about, look at, again, that testing, Mr. Booker. You know, I'm real big on that, like the testing, and see where we can have, make sure that we're saying, here's your home test kit, make those announcements. We have them in the office, or this is group tracing that's happening. Just to make sure that we clear that up and clean that up a little bit. Also want to talk in depth about our CSS program and how we can make sure that we are as equitable as possible to cover as many of the categories that benefits our children, from gender to race to language acquisition, to make sure that we are having a real good relationship with our students on campus, because we have people that they can form those close-knit relationships with, which is our CSSs. They're our first line of defense. Dr. Hurst, thank you again for the presentation. Mr. Booker, as always, thank you for the presentation, and I look forward to the next one. I'm complete.
Tracy Phillips.
Thank you. I do think that because we are so large, at least geographically, that there are some things that need to be consistent across the district. But there are some things that can probably be different. And so, safety may, the bones always need to be there, but there are some things that may look different. And that's okay, because they're five cities, you know, in this district. And specifically, I want to talk about San Pablo for a moment, right? So, I haven't met with the chief of San Pablo. Every time I see the mayor, she's like, we want our SROs. She's great, but she's like, we want our SROs. And so, another area may not want that, right? But because, and I'm making this up, I'm not saying that Hercules doesn't want it. Because I think they do, right? But let's pretend, I'm not going to use Hercules. Let's say City X doesn't want it, right? But San Pablo does. Two completely different cities. Right? It can be different. There doesn't have to be a one-size-fits-all policy. If there is a city that's like, you know what, this is not what we want to do, and we're going to reamount, and we're going to do this, and we're going to, oh, okay. I mean, as long as it's working, right? But if there's another city that's like, you know what, we have resources and we want to contribute to this, which San Pablo always has, there's no reason that they should not be able to have SROs. And if there are some people who live in South Richmond who are against SROs, right? That's okay. But they can't necessarily make the decision for a quarter of a million people. We need to do what works, and that may look differently in different places. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Tracy Rettler? No, she said no. All right. Back to the presentation.
Dr. Greenwood.
Dr. Hurst, if I can interrupt, there was the so- LaShante Smith is going to talk about the social emotional safety.
Thank you. I apologize. Thank you.
No worries. Good evening, School Board. Dr. Hurst. As Mike said, I'll be just presenting on social emotional safety and some of the key priorities that we have been focusing on as a district. One of our priorities that we brought to you last time was ensuring that every school site has a functioning school safety or climate team. And this is something that we are continuing to do. But not only thinking about our school climate teams active, but really ensuring that school climate teams are aligned across our district so that they're focused on monitoring school climate and safety trends, and that they're using a like agenda. So something that we are starting now is monitoring all of our secondary sites.
I'm sorry, could you speak a little bit more into your microphone? You're, it's a little soft and a little muddled, so we're having trouble getting every word.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Absolutely, Ms. Smith. You're clear. On this end, on the Zoom end, you're clear. I don't know about in person, but on the Zoom end, you're clear, Ms. Smith.
Okay. Thank you. I will continue, and I'm going to try to speak louder so that you can hear me in person. But I was saying that one of our priorities was to have a functioning school climate and safety team at all of our sites. And we have really focused on this, because we know that if we have school safety and climate teams on sites, they can, those teams would be the one to hold the climate and safety work at their site and be able to monitor any school climate and safety trends, and make adjustments and plans based on that. So something that we're just now incorporating is that we are monitoring the agendas of all of our school sites, so really looking at what the school sites are focused on related to school climate and safety, and then ensuring that we follow up with district resources if needed. Another big thing that we're doing right now is we are in the middle of our school, our social emotional wellness screener. It's known as the Sabers. And the Sabers is a social emotional wellness screener that will identify students who may be at risk for social, emotional, or behavioral problems. And through this data, we are able to better target our resources to students who may be in need of additional services. And as part of that, as part of our tier-one strategies, we are really focused on implementing social and emotional learning curricula in our schools. And so to that end, we have really worked with school sites to choose an evidence-based curricula, and then to participate in training to get that curriculum, get training for that curriculum onsite. Lastly, we are continuing to build out a centralized support team for social, emotional, and behavioral health. And so for that, we have added four social workers to our centralized team. And we are in the midst of hiring one more, so that would have, that would give us five social workers, which is still not enough. But it's enough to have one social worker tied to every school family. And these social workers are working directly with students who do not necessarily have resources that they can access at their school site. So we're continuing to build out just that centralized social emotional support team. And that is what I have for you now. I hope you could hear me.
Any questions from the board?
President Christian, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Ms. Smith, thank you so much for the presentation. You talked about ensuring that we have fully functioning school safety climate teams on every site. Do we know how many are still missing? Do we have that data? Like, what schools or how, the number of schools that still don't have one?
So our last count yesterday, thank you for that question, Tracy Smith Paul, is our last count yesterday, we have eighty-five percent of schools with a functioning school climate and safety team. And like I said, we're trying to go to another level of monitoring where we are now requesting for teams to upload their agendas and action plans centrally, so that we can monitor what's going on across sites each month. And, and those will be for our secondary school teams.
Thank you for that. And then, we talked about, and I can't remember the name of it, but we talked about a survey or a monitoring or something that we give kids to be able to catch them at the very beginning. Do you know what I, you know what I'm talking about, Ms. Smith? I can't think of the name of it.
Yeah, so that's our, that's our Sabers wellness screener. And so we're still in the screening period right now of Sabers.
Okay, so we're in the screen, because it's still the beginning, like it's first quarter, right? So where teachers are getting to know students, students are getting to know their school sites and what their expectations are, and how they're able to handle or not handle that, or what resources they need about that. So we're in the beginning of that monitoring process, right? When do we see that those, we now have the results, and now we're focusing on those children that need the wraparound services? When does that start happening?
So it's, it's starting now. So essentially, we want to get to a really high level of participation for the Sabers. So we extended the participation window so that we can ensure that students are taking this wellness screener at their sites. But we have been looking at the data as- Um, but we have been looking at the data as it comes into us. Um, and then we've been allocating resources uh, to the sites based on what we're seeing. And we've also used the data to really target what we can do universally based on trends that we're identifying at schools.
Thank you so much. And uh, Dr. Hurst and President Christian, I just have a comment. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
All right, thank you. Any other question? Comments? Trustee Smith Foul.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst, I want to make sure that we are giving Ms. Smith's office all the support that they need. Because social emotional well-being is something that we have spoken about, but we need to make sure that we're implementing, right? The safety and the, the, the mental safety and the emotional safety of our students, right? So I would want to make sure that, that we give support and she cannot be a one woman show, right? It's one person and we have fifty-four plus schools, so we need to look at what the needs are. And then be able to support that internally, right? I'm not saying higher, but internally, how do we spread that workout to where that Ms. Smith's office is supported? So she is on the ground with the kids and I want to make sure that that part is always elevated. And we're always giving her the resources that she needs to do the work that we know that is so important. And that is our social emotional well-being of our students. Ms. Smith, thank you for all you do, Dr. Hurst, that's my final comment around that, so I'm complete.
All right, thank you, uh, any other comments? Uh, we're going back to the consent items. Uh, C four.
But I apologize, point of order, isn't there, is there a staffing update to F two?
I'm sorry, trustee Reckler, what was your question again about F two?
F two reads as update on safety and staffing.
Yes, we still have staffing to go. Dr. Greenwood.
Good evening, board and community. I'll give you an update on staffing from the human resources department. Our current reality for classified that we still have four hundred and forty uh, total vacancies. But the hundred and sixty paraprofessional three vacancies are covered currently by a hundred, uh, over a hundred. Uh, contractors is what I currently discovered. Next slide. Uh, for our elementary vacancies, um, we've knocked it off a little bit, we have eighteen vacancies, as you can see. Next slide. For secondary, we're still at twenty point six, but, but we have a few offers out there. That the team is working on. Next slide. There was a request for special ed, so we have twenty-six vacancies for special ed. But we have twenty-seven teachers on their way from the Philippines. They were supposed to arrive this month, but they will arrive in December. Next slide. So I want to talk about next steps. So working with my team, we're trying to streamline the processes to report vacancies. So we can have a clear uh, process for getting those from both sides of the department. We're updating and cleaning up ed joint postings because we know that there are a lot out there that are old. Um, we're posting on college and career and job boards like handshake, which goes across the whole United States. Uh, we're exploring, exploring other grassroots options for recruitment. Uh, we're working with TFA, we've met with them last week, we're working with Teach USA. For international teacher to hire, like we're saying for the twenty-seven teachers that are arriving in December. Uh, we're developing partnerships with the city of Richmond. And also where, um, we just submitted our application for our teacher residency, our implements, implementation plan was accepted by the state. Next slide. Training updates, um, on October tenth, we held a first training, which first stands for facts, rules, impact. Suggestions and knowledge, so this helps managers, supervisors and administrators learn how to document. And support employees with discipline. We had over forty individuals in attendance. We also held a HR workshop on October thirteenth. And both of these um, uh, trainings were held via Zoom. And I like for the HR workshop, I'd like to give a shout out to the Riverside team. Uh, Principal Christine Hatcher, Teacher Amina Musa and Teacher Arlen Mendoza. Um, they did a wonderful job in supporting the HR department with their first HR workshop. We have forty-two members in attendance. And we will um, be following up with those participants, participants that were in attendance, so hopefully we can get them on board and hired. Uh, we will be um, having another workshop on November thirtieth. And that will be centered around classified um, employees and getting them uh, set up. Dr. Scott will be doing that. And also we'll be um, having some department trainings in November. Around mindset and efficacy and Dr. Scott will be leading our team with that. And then a just a final note, uh, we will be attending the Contra Costa County Office of Ed. And that's a sub-job fair on October twenty-seventh. Um, thank you for your time and that concludes my presentation.
We'll turn it back over to board president for questions.
Any questions?
Thank you, I do have a question. So on those charts, um, for the vacancies. What is going on in those classrooms where there's nothing on the other side? I mean, some had long-term sub, you know, like, there were quite a few that had nothing in there, so. How is, how is struck instruction being delivered?
That's usually where sometimes the principal is, um. Covering or it's a day-to-day setup.
Okay, thank you.
President, I'm sorry, trustee Reckler, are you complete?
Yes, thank you.
President Christian, it's nine fifty-two. What do we need to do to ensure that we get to the next consent item and the? Comments from the board, do I need to make a motion now?
We, we should be able to cover everything.
If we just keep going?
Yep.
Thank you, I do have a question for Dr. Greenwood, may I ask that question now?
Yeah.
Dr. Greenwood, there's a delicate balance between making sure we have a body in the room and making sure we have a body in the room that is. High quality and providing the services and the protection that we need for our students. Can you describe to me how you are ensuring along with Dr. Hurst, you're ensuring that we keep that delicate balance? Always in the forefront of our mind. Yes, we need people, but we need people who pass the vetting process of our district, right? We just cannot blatantly. Cast a wide net and take anybody that we catch, right? We, so can you describe that for me a little bit?
Yes, I can. And actually, me and my team met about this, um, this week and we call them HQEs. Highly qualified educators and what the, and what that means. And so we're looking at people that have. A, a degree, they have a credential and they want to be with our kids. And so that's what, that's the kind of candidates that we're looking for and striving to get in all of our schools. So that's who, who we're out recruiting for at this time. And so, um, we don't, people, don't want to think, people think we're forgetting about these vacancies. We're actively out there trying to get people to fill these classrooms and these classified positions at all time. That is our highest priority for West Contra Costa.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. Dr. Hurst, do you have anything to add or did Dr. Greenwood cover? She covered it, okay. Thank you so much, Dr. Greenwood. President Christian, I'm complete.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Okay. C four.
That's me, iReady, and I was just wondering if we could have a brief. Presentation on what that is, please.
Yes, that's Ms. Huffman is going to give the presentation on iReady or talk a little bit about iReady.
Good evening, board, um, and community again. Um, so. There were some notes, um, and some questions, so I guess I can kind of go briefly into sort of the difference between. iReady and um, Renaissance, which is what we use. Um, so I re- Renaissance is a assessment platform, which is STAR that we've used for many years in the district. And there had been a lot of, um. Concerns from principals that, not many, but there are some principles around the. The norm reference, so STAR is norm reference and iReady is criterion reference. The big difference between those two is that criterion reference means that. There, it's more, it's looking at the standards and telling you where students are in terms of their proficiency level. And norm reference is norming you against other students. And where they place on that assessment. So the data is not as specific around the standards. Um, so what we decided to do this year was actually pilot iReadys and also there's just some differences in the dashboard as well. It's an assessment platform, so we have STAR and we have iReady. Um, I think there's also a little bit of concern around. Our SGP, which is where we're saying the growth target should be, because again, you're measuring with a norm reference assessment. You're measuring that against students across the state who are taking STAR as well. And so when you look at iReady assessment platform or dashboard, it really goes in depth around standards that students um, need support with. Where they are in the domains. And then iReady also really tells you how well students will perform on the SBACK. Um, and so, you know, we obviously use the SBACK and so it's much more standards aligned. Uh, the reports are also um, a lot easier for teachers to actually make informed instructional decisions. Whereas the norm referenced um, assessment is just sort of norming you across other students. It's not necessarily telling you what specifically a student needs. Um, so because those things have come up from meetings and engagements with principals. What we did was last school year, we piloted iReady, we offered it to schools for free. And so many principals, we held an iReady training session where iReady representatives came. They presented the dashboard to them, there had already been interests, um. There had actually already been principals trying to purchase it separately. Um, and so what I did was reach out to iReady and say, you know what, hey, can you actually come and meet with principals and give a presentation? So that's what they did. And then there were several principals, I believe there were seven last school year who opted into a pilot. It was free, so it didn't cost us anything. And so this year, we opted, is, the assessment platform is the same cost as STAR. So there's no difference in cost. Um, and so what principals wanted was the option again this year to continue at iReady. I think at the end of this year, our goal, well, Gabe is currently working on, you know, some questions. That I share with you, trustee Reckler, around how we're actually going to be looking at pilot, we're piloting now, but we have to make a decision. Because obviously we cannot continue having two assessment uh, platforms. Um, I think the other thing that principals really like about iReady is the intervention. So once you're able to see what standards students are actually um, need support in. It actually creates grouping in the iReady dashboard and then you can actually assign work. And assign um, interventions to their actual instructional dashboard. And so the instructional dashboard has also been given to principals for free this year as well in math and ELA.
Okay, thank, okay, thank you. Um, I, I do have a comment at, at the end, if anybody, if nobody else has questions.
President Christian, I have a question.
All right. Go ahead.
Ms. Hoffman, from the people who took it free last year, right? The principals who opted in and said, okay, I want to do it, I want my school to use it, I want my teachers to use it. What has been the feedback? What has been the feedback from those schools, those teachers, those principals? And is that where you got the information that you just told us from? Is that the feedback that you were getting from them or have you gotten any more feedback? Have you tracked those kids that used it in, you know, second grade and now they're in third grade, like, can you give us, give me a little bit more detail?
Mm-hmm. Um, so we didn't really do a very good job last year of tracking. This year, we're actually doing a much, I mean, the dashboard actually will show you how many students took the assessment, how students performed. And now because they also offered the software, the instructional software, we're actually able to see how much time students are actually. In the instructional dashboard, um, as well. But some of the feedback from principals, um, so principals had to take it back to their teachers. I was not willing to just give it to principals without getting feedback from teachers if this is something they were willing to actually utilize. And the feedback had been that they wanted to utilize it. And from those seven schools last year, there's actually more now, there's thirteen. What we've heard is that the dashboard is extremely easier to use. They're actually able to make instructional decisions around the needs of students. They're actually able to see what standards, skills, domains that students actually need support in. iReady also does again grouping for you of specific skills, so they might tell you, you have five students. In your class who actually need support with phonemic awareness or who need support with vocabulary. And we'll actually group the students for you and provide that data. Um, what their dashboard also does is give you overall district data of where students are and STAR currently does not tell you overall where we are. We have to manipulate it a little bit differently, it's just a few clicks of a button. So whereas STAR takes you maybe twenty clicks, iReady takes you five to actually get to the data that you need, so. Um, but there are tons of reports in there. And because of that, that's why they also asked for additional professional development for I, from iReady. So that they could actually really understand how to get all of the rich resources that are actually in the dashboard. And so they were providing additional professional development to principal those thirteen schools. Um, to actually go deeper into the platform and really figure out how do they um, align what they're seeing in their assessment to the instructional platform. And, you know, how to use all the tools and spreadsheets and reports that are in there.
So I have two questions, thank you for that, one.
Mr. Chair, it is now ten o'clock. Is item. C four or C nine, do they require immediate attention? And I believe trustee Phillips has. Do they require immediate attention?
I would like to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I move that we continue to work through all the items until ten thirty-one PM.
Reckler, Reckler will second that. We have a motion to continue until ten thirty.
Yes, the motion is to continue through the items until ten thirty-one PM. Obviously, if we finish before ten thirty-one PM, we'll go home.
Yeah. All right. Let's go to vote, uh, trustee Miles.
Miles abstain?
Uh, trustees.
Empaña, no.
All right. Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Trustee, uh, Smith Foul.
Uh, President Christian, may I say something or are we just, well, I'm going to say it anyway because at this point, we're just willy-nilly. Um, I literally asked about this. Ten minutes ago and I was told, oh, we'll make it all the way through, uh. One second, so President, or President Christian, this is what I was talking about about ten minutes ago. Trustee Phillips, I will vote yes for this, but this is literally the conversation I asked about when I was saying, are we able to make it all the way through? Or do we need to extend? Smith Folds, yes.
Okay. Trustee Phillips?
Phillips, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Motion passes. Motion passes.
I was.
So we continue with C four and I believe trustee Smith Folds was about to ask her second question.
Ms. Huffman, do parents get a, you know, when you take the STAR, right? You'll get a kind of readout of where your kid is and what, does that happen with iReady? Do do parents get some kind of, or is it on the teachers to give that to the parents? Do parents get something from the company or is that on teachers to present that data to parents?
Um, it's, it's not something that we require the teachers to give to the parents, but we definitely encourage it. And because we're actually going back to Gabriel Chilcot, the Director of Curriculum Instruction, is actually going to be sending our communications because we were originally going to repile, pilot a new report card. Because we're going back to the narrative report card. I did ask last year and will be requiring it again that you attach. Last year was attaching your STAR report to the, to the report card since it is narrative. And so I'll also be requiring the same thing for iReady. So the answer is actually yes, I am going to be requiring it.
Okay. And then I have a question about what grade levels does iReady cover, right? Does it go as low as TK and as high as, what does it start and where does it end?
It's Kinder through eighth grade. It's Kinder through eighth grade.
Kinder through eighth grade. Okay. I'm complete with the questions. Thank you.
All right. Any other question?
I have a comment when you're ready.
All right, we need a motion.
Oh, all right. I'll move it. I'll move, I'll move iReady. I'll move curriculum associates uh, in the amount of, what is it, forty five, five hundred?
All right, it's been motion is taken.
Second.
Any other comments?
Okay. And then the comment is that I do think it's important that Ed Services Team comes back with a presentation on assessments. What are we using? How are we using it? Why are we using it? What does it do for us? What are good things about assessments? Where are challenges with assessments? I think as we move forward, it's important just for everybody to, to level set on, on that. If we're doing work, we should figure out how we're measuring it and what the best tools are for, for measuring and, you know. So I, I think that would be a good, a good thing at some point. I can send in some ideas about some things that I'd like to learn. And that's my comment. Thank you.
President Christian, I have a comment.
All right, go ahead.
I think that if we have thirteen schools using this now, then I would like to see the thirteen schools thoughts around it, right? What do they think about it? What do they would like to see different? What is the comparison between what we used to do and what they are doing now? And then that kind of matrix, Dr. Hurst, to then determine how successful the program is. Or if it's, or root causes of why it's not successful, right? So really disaggregating that data to find out if this is something that we want to continue to use or not. I'm also very interested in making sure that we're just not throwing something at sites, but we're making sure that they are trained in it and that they are consistently using it, right? Some can, some can't, right? We have to make sure that there's a consistency around that. And I want to make sure that we are doing it to our fidelity, right? If we're, if we're in it, we're in it. If we're using it, we're using it. And we're making sure that we're tracking it and we're course correcting before we throw something else new, right? So we don't want to be a fared and go after every shiny thing that's out there. We want to make sure that we're changing for a reason and that reason is justifiable, right? If we're moving from STAR and not, I also want to make sure that if this is a test, parents still have the right to opt out, right? So we gotta make that public. We have to make sure that they know that you have the right as a parent to opt out of any kind of testing that we state testing or whatever this kind of testing falls into. So I just want to make sure that that's out there. Dr. Hurst, you can correct me if I'm wrong, if this one falls under that or not. But I just want to make sure that we're clear with our community about, around our assessments and testing. So I would actually ditto what trustee Reckler said. I would like to have a board conversation about assessments and how many assessments we ask teachers to do every year, especially teachers with combo classes and bilingual classes and all the other things that we put on teachers. How many assessments are requiring for those teachers and are we providing the resources to help? I'm complete.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? All right. All right, go straight to the vote. Trustee Miles.
Miles, yay.
All right, trustee Simpanya. All right, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
All right, trustee Smith Foll.
Smith Folds, yes.
All right, trustee Phillips.
Yes.
All right, and I guess. All right. C nine. Trustee Smith Foll.
So Dr. Hurst, I pulled C nine because it is, we are, you and I are wearing orange for a reason, right? We're wearing orange because we are saying no to bullying. We are saying enough. We're saying that, oh, Ms. Huffman is wearing orange too, I think. Yes, okay. We are saying no to bullying. We're saying no to, uh, this is not acceptable in our district. But I want us to make sure that we understand that these little things right here are computers, their, their phones, there are also cameras, there, there are a hundred different things. So when we talk about cyberbullying, we're not, we're also talking about what our kids do on the phone, right? And what they do in school and out of school and how much are we really talking to students and listening to students about cyberbullying? And what are we doing as a district to address it, course correct it, and make sure we're putting in resources to where kids feel safe enough to tell you, yo, this is happening to me. I want to figure out what the services are, how, who can I talk to, what can I say? We've got kids coming to school already mad because at eight o'clock in the morning, they saw what somebody said about them on some kind of social media platform, right? So it starts the day off wrong. I'm not saying that we take this away. There's no way that we can. But I am saying, how do we up the education and protection of our students around this little weapon that we have in our hands? So that's my question. That's why I pulled it. I would like the district to speak to cyberbullying and speak to what they are doing and how they're listening to students around cyberbullying. I'm complete.
I'm gonna ask Ms. Tracy Logan to chime in on that question.
Hi, good evening, Board. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm sorry, I'm camera off. I'm home with a sick little one. So apologies, but I, I am here. So in terms of cyberbullying, it really, as you said, trustee Smith Folds, it's on a continuum. So it often starts in the cyberspace and then it plays out in the physical space. So we're doing a number of things proactively and preventatively. We're doing digital citizenship training and instruction in our, in our schools and in our classrooms. So we use Common Sense Media as the primary curricula for digital citizenship. And they have excellent lessons for students from young, young babies to older students. And it's something that obviously doesn't just happen during the month of October, but really starts at the beginning of the year. Ms. LaShante Smith and our Ed Tech team work closely together in identifying and addressing behaviors and figuring out when is it appropriate to bring in cyber resources versus in-person resources? Because those things do happen on a continuum. And as we know, the chatter happens in many spaces, social media, et cetera. So it's happening in various ways and in partnership across departments. And it's something that, just like all of the other issues that we want to make sure that we're not just celebrating or talking about on one particular month, that it's something that we're doing throughout the year to build awareness.
Thank you for that. And Dr. Hurst, I want to make sure we have policy that aligns with that, right? So if you are not in a fight, but you're filming a fight, what's the, what's the consequence, right? You're filming it and you're, we have, we see this in the middle school and high schools all the time, right? You're not in the fight, but you're filming the fight and you're sharing the fight. And by the end of the fight, when the kids are off to the office, you, it's been shared seven hundred times, right? It's been shared a thousand times. So what, how are our policies lining up to our values of anti-cyberbullying, right? Do our policies match or are our policies, policies antiquated? Because they were written before the cell phones became a third arm for people, right? And I think that we need to look at that and make sure that it's lining up with the same thing. What happens if I film a video on a Saturday and I'm, but it gets shared on a Monday, right? What does that look like and it does damage to a child or children or whatever on a Monday? But I was just at a party on a Friday. Are our policies lining up to our values that we want to protect all kids in all forms and all shapes? Whether it's cyber in person or whatever. I want to make sure that we have clear alignment, transparency and accountability. And again, I think we need to hear from the students. We need to make sure that we're listening to them and what cyberbullying looks like. Because we, our generation has zero idea of the impact that it really has socially, emotionally and on them forever. We've heard stories that someone to do something at fourteen and they won't get in college at eighteen because it comes back up in admissions, right? So are we training kids to know that you're in a whole different world now? What you do does not stay private. The Dr. Hurst, if you could speak to that, I'm complete.
Well, yes, we can definitely make sure that we investigate our practices and our policies. And then we can get back on you.
Thank you so much. And I want to make sure again, we're speaking and listening to students around this. Because that should help inform our policy and our practices around cyberbullying at all ages, starting in elementary school. They get these phones early. And they all have a tablet. We're a one-to-one district, so we have to up the responsibility. I'm complete, President Christian. And I would move the item. I would like to move, if there's no further, if there is, if there are no further questions or comments, I would like to move the item.
Make a motion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
A motion that we approve resolution for cyberbullying safety, safety month.
I second.
Any comments? Then we go straight to the vote. Trustee Miles.
Miles, yay.
All right, trustee Simpanya.
Simpanya, yes.
All right, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Uh, trustee Smith Foll.
Smith Folds, yeah.
All right, trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
All right, and myself, yes. Motion carries. Item G. Item G, comments.
Do not need item G. So we're going, we're not, Dr. Hurst has said we're not, we do not need to return close after.
All right, comments from the board. Two minutes. All right.
Any comments from the board?
All right, the student, student trustees, do you have any comments? Trustee Miles.
Uh, I just have a brief comment since we adopted the resolution for Filipino Heritage Month. I'd like to speak to my fellow Filipino Americans. Uh, happy Filipino Heritage Month. Hopefully, we get to learn a lot more about our culture this month, especially in schools. I know that the Filipino Club at Dianza is doing really great at educating us. I'm actually learning to follow there, which is really nice. Also, in support for our custodians, I'd like to shout out to the Dianza Custodial Staff, especially Alex, who is the cafeteria and ten hall custodian. He's really great. That's all.
All right, thank you, trustee Miles. Trustee Simpanya. Okay. Uh, trustee Reckler.
Yes, thank you. I've got a couple of comments. So first of all, I want to thank everybody who's working in schools, our teachers, our principals, all of our staff. There's really some great things going on in schools and I am certainly enjoying my visits. I wanted to talk about a couple of things I did over the past couple of weeks. The first one was the Project to Salad event that was at Sawskin. Was just absolutely incredible. I got to sit next to the farmer who grew lettuce for lunch. It was just so cool. And Sawskin has an actual farm on their campus. And I went out in January and I met with, Miss Neely Johnson was there. It was Summer Sigler and Principal Fleishman. And he took me out to look at this plot of dirt and it was tilled. And he was like, this is going to be a farm. And there wasn't anything growing there. And to go back and to see what is going on on the campus is just unbelievable. They, it is just unbelievable, all the vegetables they have and the flowers and the way the kids are involved. I mean, is simply amazing. So if you are out there, go ask Jay if you can tour the farm. Also, College and Career Night at Elstrid High School is very well attended. There were lots of people there. There were colleges. There was lots of college supports, financial aid. There was also career booths there, so that was very good and well attended. I also went to Washington's Hispanic, Hispanic Heritage Night, which was simply amazing. It, it, the decorations, the dress, the songs, the dancing, the place was packed. They had an outdoor like night market afterwards with food. It was just incredible. So next year, when they advertised that everybody needs to go and see what they're doing, it was truly a celebration of community and everybody pitched in. It was amazing. And thank you, custodians. And that's it.
All right, thank you. All right, trustee Smith Foll.
Thank you, President Christian. I think that the best way that we say thank you is to continue to value people through compensation. I think that's just one of the main ways that we can do it. So I want to make sure that we highlight that. Dr. Hurst, October is filled with so many things. We talked about breast cancer awareness. We talked about Filipino. We talking about, we talked about Hispanic Heritage Month, Bully Awareness Month. I want us to be past thirty days, right? We need to make these things a center of everything that we do. We have, we highlighted in the month, but we need to keep it as a core value, right? We celebrate cultures in WCC USD. We celebrate understanding of women's health and how, how women's health is a core issue for the survival of the, the human race, right? So we celebrate, we celebrate it and we also are aware of it. We talk about period poverty. We talk about body image. We talk about all the things that make us who we are as human beings, but we make it part of our core values, right? We make part of our core values anti-bullying in all forms, cyberbullying and physical bullying. We make it part of the core values of WCC USD. We also make sure that we are centering, centering the responsibility and accountability that we have as a governing team. We talked about the FPM tonight. We want to make sure that we bring it back. We talked about having safety always on our agenda. We want to make sure that that includes our emotional safety, social emotional safety coming back to the agenda. We talked about assessments tonight. One of the main things that the board does is look at academic achievement or lack thereof of our students. So I want to make sure that we continue to bring those back, those things back to the board at every board meeting. I want to make sure that we are ensuring that we are doing good governance of our district and we are providing the sport, supports that everyone needs during that. Again, Dr. Hurst, at some point, I want to talk as a board about transfers in the district. I want to talk about how we have kids from one site going to another site and what that looks like. Enter trans, enter district transfers and out at district transfers. It's just one of the things on the agenda items. I'm almost finished, President Christian. And also want to make sure that we talk about period poverty again. I'm complete.
All right, thank you. Trustee Phillips.
Thank you very much. I want to talk about three things. So one, I got an email about traffic at Grant Elementary for morning drop off and afternoon pickup. And I know that traffic congestion at school sites is something that's an issue at multiple schools.
um that's an issue at multiple schools, uh, not just Grant. And I have to go there. I told the person that I would go in the morning and watch. And I'd go in the afternoon and watch. I just have to do that so I can have a full report back. Um, but I do know that it's an issue at multiple places. Um, and it's not just a convenience issue, it's a safety issue. People dropping their kids off in the middle of the street, babies running across, I mean, it happens. Um, so I know that we can't pay for everything in the world, but it would be great if we were at a minimum able to put together kind of a volunteer corps of people who would be, do traffic uh at their school sites and get some training for them and get some, you know, orange vests for them and whatnot so our kids can move uh safely in that space. Um, I have uh another idea, um, and it's, it's simple, um, that we should be really good at something. Something. Not thirty things, not forty things, something, right? Three things. And then it could become four and then it could become five. But with all of the issues that we have, we need to find some things that we can just be really good at. The last thing is an agenda request. So on my way to court today, I wasn't in trouble. I'm a lawyer. I was going for work. But on my way to court today, somebody pulled my coat. They told me that the school district had been sued by Anton Youngher. And I looked it up online after the fact and the district wasn't sued. The school board was actually sued and I knew nothing about it, but somebody pulled my coat on the way to court. The case number is MSN twenty-one, twenty-two, sixty-seven. The school board has been represented in court and not known that it was even being sued. So I would love to see that on a closed session agenda. Thank you.
All right, as we come to a close, first I wanted to say, you know, thank uh all of our classified staff, teachers, you know, all those who have worked diligently and hard, you know, and um, and, and you, your work is um, it's not gone, I mean, it's, it's, it's being noticed. And um, you, you know, I just wanted to say we just got to keep moving. And um, and that's it. We'll close out. The next school board meeting is November second. We're adjourned and everybody have a good evening. We are ending at ten twenty-seven.